38-431.03A3, Discussion and Consultation for Legal Advice with the Outside Attorney for the District Concerning the Employment Contract for the District's General Counsel. B Pursuit to ARS 38-431.03A1, Discussion or Consideration of the Employment Contract for the District's General Counsel; The Employee Has Been Notified in Compliance With This Statute. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckham, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We are now convened in Executive Session. I move to adjourn our Executive Session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Perleberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Executive Session is adjourned. The Special Meeting is reconvened at 4:27 PM. And we move on now to our Action Item B here, which is, do I have any questions or discussion on the 2019-20 employment contract for the District's General Counsel? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the 2019-20 employment contract for the District's General Counsel?
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Perleberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Board Member Greenberg opposes.
Can we say this is the contract as presented?
Okay. Okay, let's do it again. This is, do I have a motion to approve the contract as presented for the 2019-20 District's General Counsel?
Oh, so moved, sorry.
Board Member Kravitz moves. Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Board Member Perleberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one with Board Member Greenberg opposed. Okay, I make a motion now to adjourn our Special Meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
And the Special Meeting is adjourned. Ready? Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is June 11th and the time is 5:06 PM. Please stand. Board Member Beckham, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will have a roll call, starting from my right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Perleberg.
Allison Beckham.
And Patty Beckman. All Board Members are present. Board Member Greenberg is present telephonically. Okay. We do have a call. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Board Member Beckham moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we now call on Dr. Krikard to present student and staff recognitions and celebrations. Arthur?
Thank you, President Beckman, members of the Board, and tonight, we'll open with Jill Levis, who is helping us out today while Saunders on the occasion. With no school in session, we have no formal celebrations to share with you today, but I would still like to pass along a few things about our students, teachers, and schools. First of all, Anasazi Elementary School. We would like to share with you some very exciting news for our school district that Anasazi Elementary School is now officially an international baccalaureate primary years program candidate school. And I thank Jen Waldron, the principals there, if you'd stand, and thank you.
So, thank you, Jen, very much. The acceptance of Anasazi's initial application begins an estimated three-year process of training teachers and refining its curriculum delivery to match the IB requirements. With the IB middle-years candidacy down the street from Anasazi at Mountainside Middle School and Desert Mountain High School for sixth through tenth graders, and now the twenty-year-old IB Diploma Program at Desert Mountain, the Desert Mountain learning community will soon be able to offer this world-recognized inquiry-led international course of study from elementary school through high school. Congratulations to Anasazi Principal Jen Waldron and Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, Dr. Evi Hagigot, for shepherding the process through to this point. And I'd also like to do a special thank you to Mary Ann McMurran, who is our newly hired this past spring IB, halftime IB Coordinator, who came out of retirement after having led a successful IB program in Tempe Elementary District. Now, the real work begins. HOOCOM Elementary School, what we are calling Modernization Project, it's nice to have people with journalistic backgrounds naming these projects for us. HOOCOM Elementary School will host the second of its community forums a week from tonight at 6:00 PM in their cafeteria. Parents and neighbors are invited as the SPS Plus Architects Team and our own Building Services Team continue to gather perspectives on the HOOCOM school culture and physical campus environment that will help them develop the HOOCOM Modernization Project. We encourage stakeholders from that area to attend. Sequoia A+. On May 22nd, President Beckman, Board Member Beckham, and I were on hand as Sequoia Elementary School received its official recognition as the 2018-19 A+ School of Excellence from the Arizona Education Foundation. The school combined the celebration with the last of its 30th anniversary events, including the outgoing fifth grade class's annual tissue-paper-balloon physics project. It was fun spending the morning with students and staff at Sequoia, and especially seeing the pictures of the staff members today versus their picture from 30 years ago. It was a lot of fun. And Veronica Leeper, please stand. Thank you, and congratulations. Lastly, the formal celebrations for our just graduated class of seniors may be over, but I would like to provide a quick snapshot of SUSD's Class of 2019. 1,820 students received diplomas from our five high schools on May 30th. Within this group, there are one Flynn Scholar, one Dorant Scholar, 12 National Merit Scholars, six appointees to the U.S. Military Academies, and the first complete graduating class from the District's Dual Language Immersion Program that starts at Pueblo Elementary and continues through Mojave and finishes at Saguaro High School. Graduates were recipients of nearly $80.3 million in academic and athletic scholarships. We wish the Class of 2019 well, and we know we will continue to hear of its outstanding accomplishments. I would like to thank you, Governing Board Members, for taking part in the graduation ceremonies in our five learning communities. I know some of you also attended other smaller ceremonies at various schools and for various programs. I hope they inspired you, as they did me, to continue working on behalf of our outstanding students. Thank you.
So, Dr. Krikard, do I have any separate superintendent comments?
No, that covers it. Thank you.
Okay. We move now to our information and discussion items. 6A, an update on the Student Wellness Committee.
So, I would like to introduce Dr. Stephen Chestnut, the Executive Director of Student Support Services, and Mrs. Patty Bilbury, our Director of Nutrition Services.
Good evening, President Beckman, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Krikard, Ms. Levis. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present you with some information on our Wellness Committee and a progress report of how we're doing. And Patty Bilbury and I have had the pleasure of working with this hard-working committee this entire second semester. We started meeting in February. We've had eight meetings, and we have a wonderful committee. And not only have we had those eight formal meetings, but we've done a lot of subcommittee work where people have put in their own time, research, working together on different parts of the project. So, we have a lot to report on, but we're not done. And so, we want to just give you a status report of how we're doing. So, I wanted to remind you that a wellness policy is a requirement. Federal law, ADE, requires it. We have a governing board policy that covers it. But our goal is to come up with wellness guidelines that are more ambitious, more detailed, and more of a framework that can be helpful to teachers in the classroom to guide our wellness efforts across the district. So, that's what we're working on. And it's a big project, even bigger than I thought it was going to be. So, our governing board policy is Board Policy JL. We adopted it in 2014. So, I'm not going to read you all the detail. I just wanted to remind you that it is there. That's the guiding document that will continue to be the foundational piece of our wellness work as we go forward. We've talked to Michelle Marshall about the fact that we do need to make some minor tweaks to this foundational document to bring it totally current, but they're relatively minor. It will continue to provide some guidance as a foundational piece. So, we should look for that in a future meeting. Also, I just wanted to remind you that there is an accompanying regulation, JL, goes along with that governing board policy, and it is divided into several parts. Once again, I'm not going to read this to you. I just want to provide that background information. But I just wanted to remind you that there's already expectations in this board regulation related to physical activity is one area. Food sold for fundraising activities is another. Oops, went too far. Oh, there he is. Healthy classroom parties and celebrations is another area of that regulation. Food used as reward or punishment, another area. And then, physical activity used as punishment, another area. So, we've certainly spent some time looking at our current governing board policy and regulation as we've been doing our committee work. But I really want to give a special thanks to our committee members. We have 17 dedicated people, several of whom are in the audience tonight, so thank you for being here. And they have done a good job. So, would the committee members please stand up? Natasha's here, Shana Joffe's here, Chris Osmussen. I think the others may be watching via YouTube, so we told them to be sure to watch us. But this has been a wonderful group, a lot of really dedicated people. Really appreciated Karen Gifford and her dual role. I listed her as a representative of Pueblo Elementary Community, but also, she's co-chair of Scottsdale Parent Council, and Scottsdale Parent Council is very helpful in recruiting members to this committee, publicizing our efforts. We hope to continue to use that group as we go forward and get the word out about our wellness efforts. So, this is really what we spent our time doing over the last several months in the last eight meetings. These are the major topics that we have covered, and I would just like to give you a brief idea of what some of this information is. And I know Patty can jump in because she knows an awful lot about many of these topics, but just to give you an idea of what we've been talking about. The first bullet talks about the ADE webinar. I would encourage you, if you want a detailed overview of what ADE expects, to go to the Health and Nutrition Services webpage at ADE. And there are a tremendous number of good resources right there, and I would encourage you to start with the webinar. And it is a nice outline of what is required, has some good ideas, some good tools, and we started our committee work with that. But we also know that it outlines the minimum requirements. And our committee, from the very beginning, said we want a more ambitious wellness document. We want wellness guidelines that are more ambitious than the minimum that ADE expects. I think that's a good thing. And that's one reason it's taken longer for us to finish our project than we originally thought. Second bullet talks about ADE, USDA, and CDC, Center for Disease Control documents. Those are really foundational documents as far as the requirements. If you go to that ADE website, you can find those ADE documents and the USDA documents. And then, the CDC documents that we spent some time on and plan to spend a lot more time on are on the whole school, whole community, whole child model framework. And I'm going to come back and talk about that in a moment, but that is a wonderful, holistic look at wellness in a school district. And in all honesty, it's going to probably be about a 10-year project to really fulfill all the goals or the visions of that model, and I think that's going to be wonderful work. We've talked about this from the very beginning, that our committee's not going to get this done in one year. And this, the purpose, really the goal of a wellness committee, is to meet every year and make improvements. And so, this will be, we think, a good framework, a way to move forward on that. Third bullet talks about our policy and regulation. I already mentioned that. Number four, the Wellness Policy Activity and Assessment Tool. That's also on the ADE website, and it's really a nice document. It's extremely detailed. It's about 20, 25 pages, something like that. And it's a good way to take an inventory of what our current wellness situation is. And so, we spent some time going through that to kind of get a lay of the land, what are we doing, what are we not doing, that kind of thing. It also has checkmarks. It has basically a three-year process, because one of the requirements of wellness policies is that every three years, we do a formal type assessment through the Wellness Committee to see, how are we doing? How are we complying with our own wellness guidelines? The fifth bullet mentioned the student resolution. This was from the March For Our Lives Group, and it was a group of students from Desert Mountain High School in Chap that came and talked to us about that proposal that was eventually taken to the state legislature in this session. And really, the focus of that document was student mental health, very important topic. And so, we spent some time talking with them about that. And you know, the whole school, whole community, whole child model addresses that issue of social-emotional learning for students, mental health, and we think that we're going to be able to carry forward the things that they are interested in. That was a good discussion with students. You bet.
I think what I'd like to add there, too, is when we talk about wanting to have what we call our Cadillac policy, the wellness policy that's required by USDA, which is not just food and nutrition, it has a lot to do with your nutrition ed, physical education, it does not have a component in there for social-emotional health. And that is one of the things that our district is very committed to adding to the policy. So, that takes some time, but I think I wanted to add that. So, if you go through this webinar from ADE, it will not include this component, but rest assured that Scottsdale Unified believes that that should be, and is probably just as important as everything else in there as part of that component.
Next up, we talked about the, this was kind of the order that we took topics over the last several months. And next up was the Pueblo Nutrition Initiative, and Shana Joffe, who's here tonight, has led that effort. She has a wonderful presentation, and she gave that presentation to our committee and led to some very good discussion. Seventh bullet talks about the Healthy Schools Network, the School Health Index. And we have a real expert on our committee. Her name is Elizabeth Schnall. She's a health educator with the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Office, and she knows a lot of stuff. And she's been very helpful about bringing us good research, best practices, and this is a wonderful assessment tool. So, we're right now looking at assessment tools that we might want to use and consider because we want to be able to evaluate how we're doing. And we're also considering doing a baseline assessment in our first year to kind of see a starting point, but we're having some good discussions about that. We want to be able to measure our progress over time. The eighth bullet talks about the AD Model Wellness Policy, and as I mentioned, that document, we didn't feel was comprehensive enough, but it was a good discussion starter. Number nine, we talked about the Alliance for Healthier Generation Model Policy. That is a wonderful document, and I would encourage you to go to that website and look at it and the resources that that organization has. The thing that's so wonderful about this policy is that it has a lot of detail with embedded resources. And so, we've committed to call the document that we're working on guidelines, because we don't want to get confused with the current governing board policy. But I do slip back and forth sometimes. But we want our guidelines to be more detailed with embedded resources and very useful to classroom teachers. It's not going to be a comprehensive, complete list of resources, but it'll be starters so that teachers can go to that document and get some ideas on different topics. Just as an example, a big part of the required wellness guideline is nutrition guidelines and nutrition education. Our current regulation has about one page on that topic, and our current draft has five-and-a-half pages on those two topics. So, it's not as if we're going to have a 400-page document that'll be too cumbersome, but we want to have a more detailed framework that will be useful with embedded and connected resources, which we think will help bring the thing to life. And then, finally, number 10, we looked at another assessment option, the WELSAT, which we've actually used in our district before, and had a good discussion about that. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
So, the last time that our district had a WELSAT evaluation was a year ago April, when our Nutrition Services Department had the ADE tri-annual audit. This is something where they come in and they do assess our wellness policy. As Nutrition Services, we're the gatekeeper of this policy, and we are the ones that get audited on it. We don't necessarily have control over everything that happens in this policy, because curriculum's obviously not our bailiwick. However, it is where they look to see that our district has done some type of assessment. And so, that was done a year ago, April, and right now, with our policy, we are in compliance. Some people think, or have heard, maybe we're out of compliance because we're working on this policy. We are in compliance because we do have a policy in place. It's a pretty decent policy, but it needs a lot of work to bring us up to date, and where we'd like to move forward and get us in a forward-moving direction. It was done before ADE had any type of template, any type of resources whatsoever, so it's time to go back and redo it. I know that we worked with Dr. Sacco's for years on it, but as time has gone on, I think USDA, with their final rule, got a lot more comprehensive on giving us some framework. So, I think it's time for us to move forward. So, we are in compliance, but we also want to just knock it out of the park as we move forward.
So, the wellness guidelines document needs to include these three major areas, goals, policies, and descriptions. Our current policy and regulation does touch on really all of these areas, but as I mentioned, it's still, well, it's still a very similar outline of the topics that we will cover, but as I said, we're working on much greater detail. Our current draft is 19 pages, single-spaced, and it's not all about thickness, I know. But we figure we're probably about 75% done, maybe less, and I think we could easily end up with 25 or 30 pages of a guideline document that can be helpful to our staff and our communities on this topic. So, as I mentioned, we're using this information from Alliance for Healthier Generation. We're adapting it for use in SUSD, making it our own. And as I mentioned, we're using the whole community, whole child model from the Center for Disease Control and adapting it. And it's hard to read all those things around the edge there in the blue, but those are really the 10 topics that the whole child model focuses on. And this is the work that I think will take many years to really fill in the blanks and get it to where we want it to be, because it includes health services, counseling, psychological and social services, social-emotional, climate, et cetera. An ambitious list of things that really are all-encompassing in wellness and topics that are very worthy of our time and effort. So, we're looking forward to working on that. This actually is the area. Those topics are the work that we're wrapping up now. And we didn't want to bring a document to you until we felt like the whole thing was pretty firmed up, and so, that's why we're continuing our efforts.
I'd like to also add a little bit on what Steve, or Dr. Chestnut, he tells us to call us Steve in the meeting, so Dr. Chestnut formally. When we've been looking at this complete model, we felt like we were a committee making some decisions that were pretty significant for the district. We felt as we moved forward this year, we wanted to get some of our stakeholders from all of these different areas, whether it be through the counselors or through student, like having students come and meet with us on what's important to them, what's important to our teachers. If we're going to look at classroom parties, looking, talking to classroom administrators, going through those steps to make sure that whatever we put in place, first off, we've looked at all angles, because as we know, everything we make a decision on has a trickle-down effect, or it could affect other venues that you don't even really realize. Like what I make a decision in food service, it may have an impact to a teacher's schedule. So, we needed to make sure that we have everybody on the same page, and we've looked at all just ideas and concerns and just what their needs are before we move forward. And I think that this was something that kind of stopped us a little bit right now from putting forth a policy, because we didn't feel that we had that complete stakeholder involvement. And I think that that's really important, because otherwise, it's not accepted and it's not going to move forward. We want to make sure that what we do values everybody's input.
Which kind of leads into our next slide, which is steps, next steps, and just to get them all up here and then talk about them. It's going slowly. But we want to resume our committee schedule in August, maybe first September. We want that stakeholder review, like Patty just mentioned. We want the Wellness Committee to review that input then from the stakeholders and make sense out of it, to use it. We want to work with the Cabinet to develop a plan to publicize this. We want to then finalize those guidelines, implement the publicity plan, and then ideally, and hopefully, we can implement our new wellness guidelines second semester. That's an ambitious plan. There's a lot of moving parts there, but we think we can do it, and that's been our goal. We really hope to be done, you know, right now in bringing you that guideline document, but we just need a little more time, and we think we can do it within that timeframe. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Chestnut? Board Member Beckham?
Thank you for taking this on, because I know our community's really been excited about wellness guidelines and really having initiatives and programs going forward. So, we'll look forward to the updates and then the launch in January. I do have a couple of questions, because the community members have made public comment, and it wasn't specifically called out, but I believe, if you go back to that circle, I think that that's in there. One area is going to be pesticides, air quality, the environment. So, I just want to make sure that that is part of the wellness program?
That is not traditionally part of a wellness policy, but we're willing to take on whatever Superintendent Cabinet directs us to take on.
Okay. Then, the second one that wasn't mentioned, and maybe it's not in this area also, although I thought it was kind of under that umbrella, was also diversity and inclusion. So, is that part of it, or no?
Typically, not, but, you know, this is our wellness policy, and I think we have the ability to customize it to our needs.
Okay. All right. So, I guess that we can talk about that then. So, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Board Member Kravitz?
This may, I'm not sure if this is directly, well, I guess it is directly related, but somewhat tangential. What is our district's policy with regard to students who either forgot their lunch, don't have lunch, can't afford lunch, ran out of money? How do we provide them with a lunch so that we're not one of those districts in the news for that reason?
That's a loaded question. Sorry. I was trying to put it through my diplomatic. It's quite interesting, because I just sent our policy over to our superintendent just, I believe, yesterday.
It's not actually a policy. It's not a board policy.
Yeah, it's not a board policy. It's a Nutrition Services policy on how we handle it. It's a pretty extensive package, but I'll tell you in a nutshell what it is. In our elementary school, that our students are allowed to charge, without any money, up to three meals on an account, so they can have an outstanding balance, is up to three full lunches. After that, they receive an alternative meal. It is a sandwich, apple, carrots, ranch, juice, and milk. So, it's a, you know, a pretty nice meal. In our middle schools, they can charge up to three meals. After that, there is no alternative meal, and in the high school, it's up to one meal. There's a rationale and a reason for that. We've had a lot of students who, when we call the parents and say, you know, there's an outstanding balance, you owe money, we find out that they've, especially in the secondary schools, set money with their student who would rather have the alternative meal and pocket the cash. So, that was a little bit of what happened. Now, I do know that in our schools, our managers make sure that every day they go through their list, and they're contacting those parents that have outstanding balances. Sometimes, that's There's a rationale and a reason for that. We've had a lot of students who, when we call the parents and say, you know, you're, there's an outstanding balance, you owe money, we find out that they've, especially in the secondary schools, set money with their student, who would rather have the alternative meal and pocket the cash. So, that was a little bit of what happened. Now, I do know that our, in our schools, our managers make sure that every day they go through their list, and they're contacting those parents that have outstanding balances. Sometimes that's difficult, because sometimes we don't have a current phone number, we don't have a current address. We do email and we do mail on the outstanding balance letters. There is no collections, there's no harassment, but they do get those letters, and they go out every Wednesday, um, through our point-of-sale system. If a student couldn't afford or doesn't have money consistently, that is always brought to our attention. Our managers are diligent, those are their babies, those are their, they're, they're like the grandmas of all of these children there, and they just love these kids. And they let us know when they're, they identify a student that they see sitting off to the side and never eating, or always coming up with that money. We will try and either contact parents, if we can't get ahold of parents, we work with school administration, and I think there's probably several principals in here that have had those phone calls with us, or that they've called our department, because they've identified it on their campuses. And we make every effort we can to either get a free or reduced application, and in some situations, we have parents who do not ever respond to that outreach. So, a principal can put a free and reduced application, and it is a hardship case, as long as they have not already been denied within that year of an application, they can put in a hardship, um, free and reduced application, because we've not gotten any response from parents, and we see a child coming without lunch every day. Here's the bottom line, though. If we know there's a student without a meal, I can guarantee you, they're not gonna go hungry. We're gonna feed them. We are going to feed them. Bottom line. So, that's, that's what we do, that's, I mean, that's our love. We're not gonna deny a child, but we also have to be fiscally responsible as well. But if we ever see anything out there that concerns us, we will definitely make every effort we can to rectify that situation.
Thank you for that explanation.
Patty, I have another question for you, and I'm positive you have addressed this in some other forum, but I don't know the answer to it, so I'm hoping you can. What do we do? I have seen some creative solutions to extra food lately, and, or, I guess as you would call it, waste, but not really, because it's still good, but the school day is over. What do we do with that?
So, I have seen a lot of those creative solutions, like where they bundle it and they'll send it home in a little package, and, and we, I've actually been looking at that. And, what we have as good news here is, we are probably one of the districts with the least amount of food waste in the district. We have one of our lowest food costs, if you look at the, especially Auditor General's report that comes out, and we actually have districts who call us constantly, asking how we have such a low food cost, because we're so good at our production numbers. But there is waste, there will always be waste. We, right now, don't send that home with anybody, we don't, we will at the end of a, right before, like at the end of the school year, or right before a holiday, call Wastnot to pick up if we have half a case of apples, we have a case of, you know, milk cartons, we have a little bit of turkey leftover, they'll come and pick that up. If we, we also have a warehouse, so a lot of it we will store, like our frozen goods will store for the following year, because it's still good, it still has its shelf life. But as far as leftovers at the cafeteria of the day, you've got five burritos, you've got three cheeseburgers, we do not recycle those anywhere. Part of the concern is health code. A lot of times, that's been cooked and sitting there since 10:00 a.m., so by the time you're packaging up, you're looking at 2:00 p.m. That's, the quality is not typically very good at that point, after they cleaned up their cafeterias. However, I'm really following a few districts that are doing some pilots right now. Loudoun County is one of them, in Virginia, that's doing a really good, um, launch on that, like a, not really a backpack program, but they're sending meals home for the weekend. I'm looking to see how that's working out. Um, working with the Health Department, we've had a few calls to the Health Department on how we could or could not do some of this. We do have the share table, we have been told that if, so student, USDA requires that a student takes a fruit or a vegetable with a reimbursable meal. A lot of our kids won't eat it. So, they can put it on a share table. That means that if another child is hungry, even if somebody who's packed their lunch from home, and they want to come up and get, uh, carrots, or an apple, or some broccoli, I get really excited if somebody actually comes up and gets broccoli. But, um, or the garbanzo beans, I get real excited about that. But, that, we, we don't take that food back into our program, although USDA allows it. Part of it is because it has been sitting out there, and you don't know what's happened. I mean, I've seen kids carry things up in their armpit to drop it on there, you know, it, it's elementary school. But, um, you know, we're looking for solutions, and it's something that, on the national level, it is being discussed greatly. I believe there's even a session at our national conference this summer that I'll be attending that is, um, on this particular issue, because food waste is not something we want to see.
Thank you.
So, we're on it.
Any further questions? Board Member Beckham?
Thank you for your question. It made me think of another question I had. Because I know that, that we tend to think of the food initiative as being part of wellness, but as we saw, wellness entails a lot more. And, the guidelines are being put together, so I just want to clarify. Will there be programs and initiatives coming out of those guidelines? You mentioned that there's gonna have a starter resources, but will there also be programs and initiatives, and will you actually need financial support to then, as an example, do a waste, you know, food waste program, or, um, prevention programs, or more of the healthy food initiatives, or, you know, uh, natural products that we're gonna have in our soap containers? So, at what point do we get to the initiatives and the programs in that you need financial funding?
So, I can answer on the food part. I think everything could potentially have spawned an initiative. Is it necessarily part of that Wellness Committee's function to handle that? No, but it could, the conversation could happen with whatever director that could be. Maybe it is the pesticides that we use on our grounds, maybe that then goes to building services. Something that has to do with food waste would come to Nutrition Services. I can tell you in, from me, in Nutrition Services, if an initiative came forth, we're funded separately. We're funded off of our own accounts, so would I need district support? Probably not, just in research. It would depend on what came out of that research. I've thought about, there is a green initiative that I know that is going to be starting. To get rid of styrofoam and go to biodegradable is a significant cost, so we might have to discuss that at a district level, as to how we could sustain that over time. I always look at initiatives, not as a quick fix, I have to look at sustainability over time. And if we can do it, we might have the money now, but will we have it in four years to continue with this? Otherwise, it's, it's no good if we don't continue moving forward in the direction we go. We don't want to ever go backwards. Even with Pueblo Nutrition Initiative, you know, when I met with the parents with that, our goal was, do what we can that we can sustain and never go backwards. We may not be, we may want to get here, and we're only here, but we're never gonna go here. So, that's what I, I guess that's my long answer to your question, but could it spawn in an initiative? I believe it could. Is it the function of the Wellness Committee to take that on? No, I think it would be whatever department that that would be appropriate to handle. Is that what you would answer? Okay. I don't know if you have something to add?
No, I just would say that so far, we've really focused on Nutrition Guidelines, Nutrition Education, we focused on, uh, PE and physical activity. We haven't really gotten into those other seven topics in the wheel, and, so it's gonna take some time to flush that out. But, I also want to say that we want to get something launched, and we keep talking about the idea that first year, it may not be the exact Wellness Guidelines that we want to have for the next 10 years, but we want to get launched so that we can continue to improve them each year.
Right.
And we don't want to get bogged down on too many details and initiatives so that we can't get something launched. So, that's something we're just trying to balance.
Any further Board Member questions? Board Member Greenberg, do you have any?
No, I really appreciate the questions that were already asked and their answers, so thank you guys very much.
Okay. Moving on then to Discussion Item B, Student Code of Conduct, 2019, 2020, school year.
Thank you both very much again. And the whole committee.
So, President Beckman, members of the Board, again, Dr. Chestnut, I would like, as an aside, to make the announcement that we are having technical difficulties, and so the video recording of the meeting, we are recording it, but it is not be screened, is not being streamed, so I believe the issue is with YouTube, but, but it is being broadcast for audio, and as I said, and it is being videoed, so that we can, we will have it archived, and people will be able to watch it. Is that still the case, Debbie?
There's nothing being broadcast at all right now, but we will, no audio or videos.
So, there's, if you didn't hear that, there's no, uh, no broadcasting at all right now. So, we'll do what other districts do and carry on with business. Thank you.
We could be in our, we could be in our PJs right now, and no one would know it.
My mom's gonna be very disappointed to hear that news, so. I'm back, President Beckman, members of the Board, Dr. Kreekard, Ms. Alivas. I realize I'm like the leadoff hitter tonight, and like the Diamondbacks last night, they started the game with three home runs, so I'm hoping to finish with two home runs this evening, and hopefully, this is the second one. I want to talk about the Uniform Code of Conduct, give you an update on that committee, the good work that that committee has, we have been doing second semester also. And we had an outstanding committee, several of them are here in the audience. If you are on that committee, would you please stand? Christian Bono's here, Aaron Cadera, Nathan Slater, and appreciated the good effort that this committee put in. And, these are people that live with the Uniform Code every day, so they have some very strong opinions, some good ideas on how to improve it. So, the purpose of our committee is to ensure that our code, our Code of Conduct is in compliance with federal, state, and local law, to ensure consistency in implementation, and then to use the discipline data in a meaningful way. And so, I sure, I'm sure everybody in the audience knows what I'm talking about, but this is the hard copy of the Uniform Code, and it is on the front page, homepage of every school website. And, if you have a question about, uh, any number of things concerning student conduct, dress code, attendance policy, et cetera, it's in here, or it's online. And so, it's a very useful and important document that our administrators use every day. Our guiding principles on our committee is that we want to create a positive learning climate at each school focused on prevention, and can't say that word "prevention" enough. Uniform Code tends to focus on violations and consequences. That's not the whole document, but it is an important part, but we have a prevention focus in SUSD, and we work hard on that. I'm gonna come back and kind of finish with that, but that is kind of the, one of the guiding principles behind our work. We want to develop clear, appropriate, and consistent expectations, and we want to ensure fairness, equity, and continuous improvement. That was really what our committee set out to do. So, we spent a lot of time, some time, looking at the data, and what were our biggest problems. A lot, a lot of numbers up there, and here's what those numbers mean. We had four top violations, and if you talk to administrators or teachers, they can tell you, probably attest to the fact that these are the four that we deal with the most. There's some good news in these numbers and some not-so-good news. First violation, defiance and disrespect. The good news is that number of office discipline referrals for that type of behavior, that violation, uh, dropped, is still on a downward trend, although it did tick up this year with 738 office discipline referrals across our 29 schools for that topic. That's really our number one. Number two, disruption. So, good news there, and we really like to see that it has continued for three years in a row on a downward trend. We had 476 office discipline referrals for disruption. The next one, minor aggressive acts, kind of a catch-all, but once again, that number has continued to go down, and I think it's because of our emphasis on preventative activities. It's because of positive behavior intervention and supports, it's because of counseling that our counselors do, it's because of our social workers, the good work that they do, it's because of what's happening in the classroom every day with teachers providing guidance, and it's the good work of our staff that I think has continued to work in a proactive manner, preventative manner, to try and address this discipline. Interesting, tobacco has become our fourth top violation, and it did go down this year for office discipline referrals, uh, from 628 last year to 402 this year. But as you know, vaping is a problem, and it's a real problem at our secondary schools, and our administrators work hard on this issue. We try to get out a lot of prevention messages, and we try to be proactive on the subject, but it's something that teenagers are experimenting with right now nationwide, and we're not immune from that. So, that is an issue with us, and, you know, all this stuff comes across my desk. I, it probably was in there in that 402, I don't remember a single cigarette, I swear, 402 vape violations, some form of vaping or another. That kind of leads to my next slide, and if you put those 402 tobacco violations in with alcohol and other drugs, that trend is going in the wrong direction. With 672 office discipline referrals this year for that category, we often call it ATOD for short, but alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. So, there's, there's work to be done. I think we're doing some good things to address the issue, but we still have a lot of work to do. We want to see this trend get turned around, and that's really our goal on this particular, behavior in particular. So, the changes to the code that we have, uh, come up with as a committee, we updated athletic eligibility language, we streamlined the technology responsible use agreement, because that's very important, right? Our kids have, bring your own technology, and cellphones are a big part of every student's life, you know, all the way down to primary grades, and so, we have to make sure we regulate those things properly. We aligned violations with language used in synergy. Now, that doesn't sound like a big deal to you, that's a very big deal to assistant principals, and their administrative assistants, as they enter that data into our synergy system. We have now aligned the violations with the language and synergy. It'll make it easier and more effective, a better way to track our trends in our data. We clarified excused absence language, the state redefined that last year. We got the word out last year, and we made it even more crystal clear in this year's code. And then, we spent a lot of time on other clarifying language and alignment of consequences. Not giant, major changes by any means, I would just call them edits, updates, improvements, but still important ones. So, our plan for this upcoming school year would be to continue with prevention. Positive behavior intervention and supports, a big deal at our schools. We had a wonderful training this spring to do a refresh on that, we had 10 schools participate, we have a lot of other schools involved. We plan to provide additional training to staff on that this coming year, and want to continue to increase that. We will be implementing the Sanford-Harmony Social-Emotional Curriculum in all K-5 schools, including our K-8 elementaries. And we've had trainer trainers this spring, so we have people trained at every school how to help roll that out at their school. Teachers are telling us, I need a, I need a curriculum that I can teach that's great, appropriate, age-appropriate for my students, to help them understand social, emotional issues. And it's a wonderful curriculum resource, it's actually a free curriculum resource provided by a philanthropist, it's wonderful information, and we think it's going to really help us at the elementary schools. Another thing we're very excited about is we plan to train assistant principals in restorative justice practices. Justin Firehawk, Assistant Principal Tonaliya, K-8, attended a trainer of trainer sessions this spring, he's ready to go. And we had some introductory sessions with the group last spring to make sure everybody thought this was something that they would like to learn more about, and they are hungry to learn more about restorative justice. It's not a silver bullet by any means, but I think it can certainly help us in our ability to work with students and turn those discipline moments into learning moments, and help them learn those social, emotional skills to help them be successful. We'll continue with our JFCS specialists, our prevention coaches, our social workers and counselors providing social, emotional groups for K-12 students, and we are in the final year of a high school health and wellness prevention grant that has really been very wonderful for our high schools as an asset. So, those are some of the major things we're gonna continue this coming school year, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Board Member Beckham?
Thank you again, Dr. Chestnut. You mentioned restorative justice training, and that we're gonna start that practice with the, did you say assistant principals? They get that grade, and what grades?
K-12.
K-12, great. So, with restorative justice, will we need to be changed, if, if the practices change, will we need to be changing any of our policies to better reflect what those practices are?
It's a really good question. I don't think we're ready to answer that yet. However, you know, Tonaliya went to the training a year ago, Justin Firehawk and Elizabeth Milwaukee went a year ago, and so they did some restorative justice things in their school this past year. In fact, one hearing, we worked with a hearing officer, and we turned that from a traditional student discipline hearing into a restorative justice meeting. So, I think we will have to do that, and next year, when I'm standing here, I think we'll probably have some specific language around that.
Okay. All right. Go to that. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Chestnut. All right, we move now to Discussion Item C, the first read of revisions to policies JK, student discipline, JKD, student suspension, JKE, expulsion of students, JLCD, administering medicine to students, and JLDB, restraint and seclusion. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Kreekard and Jill, thank you for being here. For this evening, I have several of the policies from Section J, which is the policy section related to our students. I reviewed these policies with Dr. Saccos and other members of her team, and we will start with Policy JK, which addresses student discipline. I have the red line up here on the screen for you. What we did with Policy JK is added the language you see What we did with Policy JK is added the language you see there in red, which is all recommended by ASBA. It aligns with the statute that addresses these issues under ARS 15843. There's a statement of nondiscrimination against students in the administration of discipline. There's a statement that each principal will have the copy of the Code of Conduct available for students and parents at their site. It reiterates that we will hold student discipline in the strictest of confidence, and that we will keep an administrative log of discipline. And that is the rest of the policy. Are there any questions on that before I move on? I'll take them as we go through, or comments? Okay?
Questions? No?
Okay.
Board Member Beckham?
Sorry.
Thank you. Real quick, the matrix that shows the offenses and consequences, is that in the Code of Conduct?
Matrix that shows what? I'm sorry?
That shows the, you know, the offense and then the consequence, possible consequences, that's in the Code of Conduct?
Yes.
Is it not? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next student-related policy, which is JKD, student suspension. Let me pull that one up. This policy mostly is formatting, but we did add language also recommended under ASBA's models stating that here at the top, that the superintendent, principal, or other school officials who are granted power to suspend students may do so, and that it is the superintendent, not a principal, who may remove a student from school under certain circumstances. Another area that we noticed during review, well, let me just stop here. We have that the student may be represented by counsel. That happens occasionally when we have a discipline matter. We wanted to make clear that that's at the student's expense, the school doesn't pay for that. Just a correction that ASBA suggested, changing prejudice to bias to the student, that we won't look differently at a student's discipline if they choose to bring a counsel, a lawyer to assist them. So I'm scrolling through mostly formatting changes. Here in this step four to suspension over 10 days, the ASBA model, thank you to Dr. Sakos for noticing that, the ASBA model didn't include the provision regarding our students with disabilities who are subject to discipline. They are entitled to a determination as to whether the conduct at issue was a manifestation of that disability. And so we added in that language in compliance with IDEA and Section 504. There's another similar clause in, I think, the next policy I'm going to show you, and we made that same change. And I think that was it for the substantive changes in this one. I'll just make sure here. Yeah. Are there any questions about that one?
I do have just one.
Board Member Greenberg?
Nobody else, does it? Thank you, Michelle. Just really quickly, in case it's, and I might have missed it because I know you highlighted it, but what was the impetus behind the without prejudice change, without prejudice to the student to without bias to the student? Was it just to make it easier or something? Just because without prejudice, I mean, does have kind of a well-known meaning, so I was just curious if something had happened or somebody didn't understand that?
Yeah, ASBA did not explain that revision. I don't think it's, I think people can understand both phrases, but they didn't explain why they recommended that change.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh huh. Board Member Beckham? Thank you very much, Michelle. I have some questions, and they may be just as simple as, we don't do that, but I do need to ask them, because I've had some community members question some of our student suspensions and discipline practices this past year. So on page one for JKD, under step one, it says suspension for 10 days or less. Step one, the student will receive notice. Should that possibly be the student and parent or guardian? Because I guess, I don't know if it may not be the practice, but sometimes the student gets the information and the parent or guardian is not getting it. So I'm wondering if we should be more clear that at any suspension, the student and the parent and guardian will receive notice, whether written or oral. So just, I just, these are things probably just to think about, because I, you know, unless you definitely know the answer, but, because I just want to throw them out at you to think about.
Dr. Sakos or Dr. Chestnut, do you want to speak to how you normally communicate with students and families under suspension for less than 10 days, or how principals normally?
I'm happy to. Sorry, whoa. I'm happy to unless Dr. Chestnut would like to do so in his new role. So typically when a student, when it warrants an in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension as part of the matrices in the Code of Conduct, it indicates parent conference as well. So while it's not specified here in JKD, and we may want to add that, I think that would be consistent with our practice.
Okay, so that's something to consider adding. Then if I go down to number two, the authorized district personnel shall make reasonable efforts to verify facts. I'm wondering if this should be a little bit stronger and maybe will either define what you might mean by reasonable effort, or say make every effort to verify facts.
I'm trying to find where you're...
Oh, under step one, where I added the parent and guardian, just go down to number two. So it's A2.
Got it, I think. Right here? Provided that a written record of the action taken is kept.
No, up one, not step B, it's under A2.
Okay.
So, yes, there.
Here.
So under make reasonable effort, that, you know, hey, I made these, you know, not that we always do this, but sometimes it can happen. I made the effort, I asked some questions, but did you really take that next step? So I'm just having difficulty with reasonable effort, wondering if it should be make every effort to verify facts. Just going to put it out there, don't need to really respond, just to think about.
Okay. I think that reasonable is a general standard. I think changing it to every effort could be challenged as you didn't talk to all 100 people who might have seen some, that kind of thing. So I think reasonable actually is the better word to use in that instance, or something like reasonable. I wouldn't say every, because I think we would get quibbles about, well, you didn't do everything.
Okay. Well, then I would like to look at how our personnel is defining what reasonable is and making sure that we are making every effort that we can even, within reason. Then under 2B, once again, it says a letter to the parents will be written within a reasonable time. I'm wondering if, especially for secondary students and possibly even middle school, to add a letter to students and parents. I think when students of middle school and high school are actually receiving that formal letter, I think with their parents, I think that that might send a very good message. Number three, can you just explain to me if you have a short-term suspension and because there is some discretion in suspensions, given the matrix we have, why there isn't an appeal for suspensions for short-term, up to 10 days?
Would you like to answer that, Dr. Sakos? I can tell you my take on it, but you're really the expert. Suspension for less than 10 days isn't considered change of placement or for those students who are disabled, and it's also considered to be something that the leader of the campus can do in their discretion up to 10 days. And they're the experts about what's going on on campus and what is, you know, what's a common discipline for certain infractions, and all of those factors that go into deciding what the discipline is going to be when it's less than 10 days. And so those decisions are within the principal's purview and ability to impose upon students, and there is no appeal. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't have parents who contact either the principal or the next person above the principal and say, hey, I don't agree with what happened, can we talk about it? And we do talk about it.
Oh.
Okay. Is there?
Nice job, counsel.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that is that when myself or Dr. Chestnut gets a complaint or a concern with an out-of-school suspension, as Ms. Marshall said, even though it's not appealable, we do listen to the concerns, and what we do is ensure that we have followed due process. So that is getting the student's side of the story. That is making sure that we have done a reasonable statements or investigation. So there are times where we say, wow, we missed a couple of things, and we need to look at this again. And then there's times where it's, we've done everything we can, processes were followed, and then it, you know, we uphold it. So, but we do listen to the concerns even though it is less than 10 days.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I think this is my last question. There is a subheading called alternative to suspension. And I was just curious, how many students, you know, have qualified or given this alternative to suspension? Is it a fair amount of those who have offenses, or is this something that's fairly rare?
We are getting better at providing alternatives to suspension. Some campuses have more opportunities than others, and by that I mean they have somebody who is able to house in-school suspension or stay after school with students on work detail. When we talk about restorative justice practices, that's what we're really talking about, is alternative suspension options. So we, you know, again, that's an area where we want to make sure that students have an opportunity to do, to make right what they did wrong, and we afford students those, we want to afford students those opportunities, so long as they are not a danger or a threat to the campus, you know, fights, things of that sort, then we have to remove them for obvious reasons. But that is something we really want, as Dr. Chestnut said, to really focus on next year.
Okay.
And I would add, if I may, it's something Dr. Sakos and I have talked about frequently in the last year, eliminating or minimizing the number of out-of-school suspensions all the way through expulsions through restorative justice. The more we can do to provide support for schools for in-school suspensions where learning continues, because that's important, out-of-school suspension in today's world is very different than what it was when I was a child, and with students going home and being home alone and left to their own devices. So we've been, we've been working on that, and philosophically, we're in agreement and continuing to move forward on taking care of as many of those as possible, with, at the same time, supporting the principals for their decision that this child is a danger to the school right now, or to that level. So working with principals on those alternatives is something we talk about.
Well, and thank you for bringing this up, because I think the board had been talking about restorative justice and what are some of the avenues that we could take, and so we, I personally really appreciate you looking at it. So I'll look real quickly. If there were any more on this page.
I'll just jump in, I'll just jump in while you look at your notes, because that work detail idea, I kind of like that. I know some countries actually have students clean their classrooms in the school after school, so I threaten that with my children all the time, so just saying.
And that was it. Thank you. Any further questions?
Okay. That was JK, it's a long one. Lots of, lots of steps in due process in there. That was JKD, student suspension. The next one is JKE, expulsion. For this one, the ASBA model had some options in it, and the options were whether the board wanted to hear expulsions, the first level of an expulsion, or use a hearing officer, which is what this board, our district, has done for as long as I have been here. And so we went ahead and chose the hearing option. What families can do after the hearing officer's recommendation is, that's the time that they can appeal to the board to hear that. And so that's the first significant change you'll see there, is that we're just adding in the language, the governing board directs all expulsion hearings to be conducted by a hearing officer. So then this policy also has separated some sections between regular ed students and those receiving specialized services. I went through these in detail with Dr. Sakos. This represents our process. When we have an expulsion, it's presented, a recommendation for expulsion from a hearing officer, it's presented to the board. The parent is notified. They're given a packet of what the district's evidence is, what witnesses may be called. They're given information about policies, they being the family whose student is possibly going to be expelled. They're told what their rights are and that they can have counsel at the hearing officer's hearing, and they're given copies of policies. That's more of what I just talked about. This is, the hearing will be conducted in private with only the hearing officer and those necessary for the proceeding. When it's in front of the board, it's presumed that it's in executive session unless the parent asks for it to be not in executive session. And then this language is about the appeal to the board if the hearing officer recommends Here is that language that I referenced in the previous policy regarding the rights of students with disabilities to a manifestation determination, which is a process through which the people who have the best knowledge of the student meet to talk about whether the conduct at issue was a manifestation of the student's disability, in which they're entitled to different consequences. And then this section talks about readmittance procedure, which is just, you know, how a student comes back to us after they have been on expulsion, on an expulsion. Certain conditions are required to be met, no further violations, completion of all classroom tasks, regular attendance. And then that is all the changes to the policy that we're recommending, and I will show you, the exhibit is the readmittance conditions. ASBAs did not match what we do in Scottsdale, so we are recommending not using the ASBA exhibit, but using instead the exhibit that we currently have in use, which is what you have in your packet materials. Are there any questions or comments on JKE, expulsion of students?
Any questions? Board Member Greenberg?
No, none. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next one we have is Policy JLCD, administering medicines to students. We are recommending adding this language here in red and underlined, which talks about the statutes that allow a school district to administer epinephrine as well as naloxone in emergency situations. Naloxone being an anti-opioid for, in emergency situations. This issue was brought to our attention by a community member, asking why we don't do this. And so we met and talked about adding... do this. And so we met and talked about adding this language. The, the epinephrine, EpiPen, when we, when that was first put in statute, we talked a lot about how expensive that is and whether the district could afford to have that in its schools. There are, we have been approached by various organizations wanting to donate such things to the district. And this policy gives us the ability to accept that kind of a donation. And the same with the naloxone products. One other area that came to our attention from the same community member after we had published this as a first read, red line, was rescue inhalers. And there is another provision of one of the same statutes that talks about epinephrine that allows for us to do the same with rescue inhalers. So while I didn't have the language in time for this meeting, I would recommend that. And I'll bring it back in our next for you to review the actual language. And we also want to have a discussion with our head nurse, Ms. Leslie Sharp, about implementing that and, and making sure that she's ready. Because we also have to train, per the statute, employees at the schools to be ready to administer any of these.
Michelle.
Yes.
Regarding an EpiPen, and I, I applaud this. Right now, can you speak to what we're doing currently? Every student, my daughter has one, is, or brings their EpiPen to school, which is stored in the nurse's office. So how is that administered then? Or what are we talking about as far as having an extra one that the school owns in case of some child doesn't know they have an allergy and then it's administered? How?
Right. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Sakos, is that we would have, under this policy, one or two pens in the nurse's office for any student who might be having anaphylactic shock, whether they have a prescription or not. And there is some provisions in, there are some provisions in the statutes for immunity for employees who are administering that in good faith in an emergency and trying to help a student. Did you have anything to add to that?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Board Member Kravitz?
But if I'm reading this correctly, students can carry their
Yes.
own epinephrine, you know, their medications.
They can carry their own medication and self-administer, yes. Thank you for that clarification.
Any further questions?
Okay. The last one I have for first read for you is policy JLDB, called restraint and seclusion. We do not currently have this policy, so it's, that's why it's all in red. This policy sets forth the statutory, follows the statute ARS 15105 regarding restraint and seclusion of students. There are specific definitions of what a restraint and what seclusion is. The very first sentence of this policy states that it is not to be used for disciplinary reasons. That's very important. We have had an internal procedure whereby schools have forms that they fill out if a restraint or a seclusion happens. They're supposed to make every effort to contact the parent before the end of the school day and send home documentation of what happened, what were the precursors, precursors to the restraint or seclusion. And so that parents are notified, hopefully on the same day that it occurs and have an explanation of why it occurred. So this policy supports that practice. I won't read the whole policy to you, but if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take those.
Board Member Beckham?
Yes. This is an interesting policy to read.
Yes.
It, it kind of takes you back and really makes you think how serious this is. And I know I, we, the SUSD had an experience with this, oh gosh, probably 10 years ago, I remember, that didn't go well. So I'm glad that there is a policy. But because the seriousness, the nature, the seriousness of, the nature of what, what is happening, which means that somebody, some personnel thought the student could either harm themselves or harm somebody else, other, because it's not disciplinary. Otherwise, you wouldn't restrain and seclude them. So when I get down to the very bottom of the first page and I read, "The school personnel shall provide the pupil's parent guardian with written or oral notice on the same day," I just still find that very unacceptable. I would want to say they will contact as soon as it, you, that the personnel is aware it is happening. And that if you cannot contact the parents that same day, you don't just send them home on the bus, like something changed. You keep the child at the school until the parent picks them up. Because if you thought at some point that they were going to cause harm to themselves or somebody else, what changed or what could trigger that that might be on the school bus? And the way that this reads, it sounds like, well, if we didn't get a, I know, I'm, I'm not trying to make this sound cavalier, because I don't think it is cavalier, but if we couldn't reach them, then we could send them home.
I'm sorry.
And so that makes me very nervous. I would think from a legal standpoint, we would want to make sure that parent is notified that day. And if it takes that, you know, the child doesn't get on the school bus, then the child doesn't get on the school bus until that parent or guardian comes and picks them up, and it's discussed. So that was just something that I just was thinking. And from a parent's standpoint, that's what I would expect. And I wouldn't want to find out three, four days later because something was wrong with my telephone from somebody, which is what happened 10 years ago in Target. Everybody in Target was talking about it. And so I really want to look at that language. And then under C, let's see what I put, "Schools, personnel, and parents shall review strategies together." So I was adding, because it just says, "Schools shall review strategies." I was thinking maybe we really need to define that to be, it's the personnel and the parents that are working together to figure out what to do. Those are the only two things from a parent's standpoint, what I was.
I just want to address what you were saying about a student having an incident and then later, school choosing to put that student on the bus. Some students have behavior plans, because for whatever reason, they've, they've maybe exhibited the behavior in the past. And there have been meetings with parents about what are we going to do when X happens? How do we de-escalate? How do we avoid the restraint or seclusion in the first place? For some students, it's not going to be a danger to later give them their regular mode of transportation. That's what the individual plans are for students in those kinds of situations. But certainly, although there's a document that's definitely going home, there is a phone call and a contact with the parent. We're not just putting a student on the bus that we don't know, oh, hope, hope they're okay. We're going through whatever plans we might have already for that student. Or in the situation where it doesn't make sense to let the student go, then we are keeping them until a parent can come pick them up. So every situation is different. I don't know, I'm not familiar with the everybody talking in Target situation.
Right.
But I don't think you would want, I, I think there are parents who would not want you to keep their child, because it's just a normal occurrence that we just are working with so that they can get back with their peers and learn for the rest of the day, depending, you know, depending on when it happens.
Then I think that needs to be better defined in the policy. So if it's a first-time incident, then, you know, how you would notify the parent, if they have a behavioral plan and it's set up, then, you know, have that be a little bit more specific in the policy then. Because as I read it, I, I wouldn't know about that. And, and I didn't have that personally, but, you know, through, through my own experience, otherwise I would have known. So I'm glad that you clarified that. Thank you. But then I think it needs to maybe be clearer in the policy.
And I didn't bring a copy of the statute that this is based on, but I believe these are mostly out of the statute. And just, I'm not disagreeing, but in general, the ASBA policies put what are the minimum standards that we must comply with. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have more. But let me take a look at what it says in the statute, and I'll give you a more full response to that. Did you have anything to add?
Great. Thanks.
I was just going to add that in the vast majority of cases that may result in restraint and seclusion for student safety has to stu, has to do with students who are under special education. And so there, this is typical where the IEP team, when talking about a behavior plan, identifies the antecedents, talks about what those strategies are that the student best responds to. And so I think where that, that's where Ms. Marshall's talking about. For some students, you know, they, they're able to de-escalate and get back to the regular school day. And that's what we want to see, is those, a decrease in frequency of types of behaviors and then being able to respond and then get back, back, back into class. And so a lot of times, these discussions, because I know you mentioned, you know, rather than schools shall review strategies, this is more times than not a school IEP team, which involves the parent, often the student, depending on their participation level, counselors, behavioral specialists, principal, assistant principal, school psychologists, who are all together trying to talk about what are the best strategies for the student. And then I, the only thing I, else I would add is that we have an SUSD for some time and will continue to offer continuous training on CPI, which is the non-violence crisis intervention. And so that's a big focus on de-escalation strategies, working with, with students, so that a restraint and a seclusion is the absolute last, last resort. And we're tracking that data, and we have been, to ensure that, again, we're given the training that, to who we need to, and, and that we do see a decrease, because we're doing better at these behavior plans and de-escalating that behavior.
Ms. Marshall, quickly, you know, can you point out where, and I didn't see it in here, but who is authorized to, to do one of these restraints? And how do we check that they are the appropriate individual doing so?
So I'm, I'm looking, because I'm not sure that that specific is in the policy, but I do know that what we do is the CPI training that Dr. Sakos mentioned. We have a behavior expert in our district, Dorian Brown, and she trains staff on how to use CPI. And as we mentioned before, CPI isn't just about restraint and seclusion. The first thing CPI teaches you is de-escalation and how to not get there in the first place. And so there's a big emphasis on that. And then if you are a staff member who's, who finds yourself in that situation where you have done everything and a restraint or seclusion is warranted, you're not to be doing that unless you have been trained in CPI.
So it's not in here now, but we don't make reference to it anywhere that this is allowed by some, or point to that they must have gone through some sort of training?
I don't believe it is in here. And so that's a good point. We, we can look at adding language about the training, because it is important.
Okay. Good point. Any further questions?
Yeah. I, really quickly, I just wanted to thank the administration for putting this, this policy together and getting it to us, because I do think it's very important. And my understanding is, looking at the statute, that it's essentially, I believe, Michelle just said, a copy of, of what's in there to, to a large extent. And I think it, you know, I think it's a very important thing to have, that people are aware of, that people can cite and reference. It's also important as well, as I mentioned at other board meetings, that, you know, we make sure that the special education department, which is where, you know, this would most often be occurring, do have the resources and training they need on this and other issues, just so that, you know, everyone, everyone is properly trained in this and knows how to react and respond. So thank you guys again. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing else?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay. We move now to our public comments. Jill, do I have the cards? Okay. "In conformance with the open meeting laws, the governing board may not discuss or take action tonight on any matters raised during public comments that are not on the agenda. However, the governing board may respond to direct criticism, ask staff to review the matter, or ask that it be placed on a future agenda. As a reminder, each speaker will have three minutes. Our screen will indicate the time with a 30-second warning from Vice President Beckham. Please be prepared to close your comments and relinquish the floor at the conclusion of your time. We do ask that each speaker introduce themselves for clarity in the records. We thank you for your time and attendance here tonight and your cooperation in the following the meeting protocols." And my first speaker is, I am not going to say this right, Ives Maches.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ives Maches. I'm the varsity girls' basketball coach at Arcadia High School. I've also been a teacher in the district for eight years. I'm now in private business, but I've been coaching at Arcadia for 12 years. I'm here to speak in support of Sheriff Fezner Meyer, our athletic director, who I'm to understand is not the athletic director at Arcadia presently. I'm a proud graduate of Chaparral High School. I've been associated with the district for a very long time. Our sports philosophy is character, respect, and sportsmanship. And I believe in those values. I believe that's what sports should be about. I believe that's what school should be about. And I believe in this district, and I believe that we've been following those policies. And I also believe that Sheriff Fezner Meyer had exemplified that at Arcadia High School. She was a tireless champion for gender equality in sports. I coached girls' basketball. I came from a district previously where girl's sports were really kind of, they were over there. And at Arcadia High School, under Ms. Fezner Meyer, girl's sports were just as important as boy's sports. And I think that that's a big deal. I think that she held the coaches to a high level of accountability. And I think that she held the athletes to a high level of accountability as well. And that meant that sometimes at Arcadia High School, students didn't play because they didn't earn the right to play, or coaches didn't coach because they didn't earn the right to coach. And that we pushed forward values that we could all be proud of as part of Arcadia High School. I know that things have happened at Arcadia at this point that have put us in the media for all sorts of reasons that we don't want to be there. And the administrators at Arcadia that I know are not the ones that are being described in the media. Okay? There's a lot of things that were said at meetings that were said about administrators that I think are false. There were meetings that were held that people were intimidated to speak out what they actually felt because of fear of retribution or fear of publicity. And so I think that in this particular case, that Ms. Fezner Meyer has been a victim of circumstances and a victim of things that have been litigated in social media and in erroneous articles in places like AZ Central and, you know, other places where sports reporters are there. And you know what? These are sports reporters. These are not personnel policy reporters. They get one side of the story. They write about it. These are not investigative reporters. And I think that the decision that has been made to dismiss Ms. Fezner Meyer from Arcadia High School was not in the best interests of the students or the athletes of Arcadia High School. So I respectfully request that that decision be reviewed and possibly reconsidered. And I do appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Melinda Gulick.
But I sure will speak right now.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, this is the only, you're good.
Oh. Good evening, members of the governing board. Superintendent Krikard, I'm Melinda Gulick, longtime resident of the community, SUSD graduate, parent of a kindergartner at Cherokee. Just came to share with you that Denny Brown and I are prepared to co-chair Yes to Children, leading a broad coalition of business and community leaders, parents and citizens in support of the maintenance and operations override. We urge you to place the MNO override on the ballot this fall, maintaining current class sizes in all-day kindergarten, continuing specials including music, arts, and world languages, and athletics, and investing in our very best asset as a district, our teachers, enhancing technology and professional development and paying them competitively. A unanimous vote sends a strong message to the community about a unified front to address a serious issue, and we urge all of you to vote yes tonight. Thank you for your leadership and your support. We're ready to serve and ready to rally our community to pass the override. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Eric Kerland.
Hi. My name is Eric Kerland, longtime teacher here at Scottsdale. My wife is still a teacher in Scottsdale. My son, incidentally, was the first class to go through the FLI program at Pueblo. And I just dropped him up at NAU for an orientation. And so things really moved quick. The foreign language immersion program is one of those things that I think we can credit the override that we had in place. the override that we had in place for doing. Our legislature, of which I'm trying to be a part of to change this in 2020, kind of looks at education as something that they fund as little as possible, hoping to get as much as they can. And one of the things that they do, funding us at 66% of the average in the United States, not, so if the average is C, we get an F of the C. It's just bad. So, they force you to go out and get an override. You have to panhandle across the district and say, please give us a little extra, a little more porridge. And so, we get to do 15% more, and a lot of people think that that is in excess. But I kind of equate it as if you're trying to feed your family and you have a pizza. And the pizza's on the table and you have four family members, but the pizza is a personal pizza. So, yes, they're right. We do have pizza for dinner, and everybody's going to get a piece, but we have such a small pie. So, when you get 15% extra, it's just like adding a little bit of sausage on that. It's not much. If you have to feed your family and you don't have enough to feed your family, you're going to go out and get a second job. You're not going to say, just eat two meals a day. That's what an override is. It's about going out and getting a second job. And it's not for incidentals. It's not for extras. It's for doing the foreign language immersion program, so a child like my own can go to NAU on a Lumberjack Scholarship and then go to study abroad. I am very thankful for prior boards for doing this. I am not teaching right now. But I encourage you to please give the community an opportunity to say whether the funding is appropriate or not. You as the gatekeepers, as the volunteers of the district, I hope that you can see that it really isn't something for you to say, well, I don't know, we really need it. Please give it the opportunity it deserves and put it out to the public. Thanks very much for your time and your advocacy for our kids.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, Mike Norton.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the governing board. I too have offered to join the Yes to Children organization as a steering committee member, something that I am proud to do. I'm proud to work with Melinda and Denny. I'm proud to be involved in attempting to maintain some reasonable level of funding for our schools. I'm a data guy. I always have been a data guy. When I wonder why we struggle so much with our budgets at our schools and why we suffer so much pain, I look back to when my daughters started school. In academic year 2009, the state and our override funded our schools at the rate of $8,500 per student per year. That's a number that I get from reading the reports of the Arizona Auditor General. It's not a number that I've concocted myself. I just read the reports. By the time my daughters got to kindergarten, state funding had already been cut some. And they were off, they entered school with funding below $8,000, down in the $7,500, $7,600 range. It stayed at that level consistently all through the middle of their elementary school years. We never got over $7,550 throughout that period, even after we passed the MNO override, the year after we had shut down our schools for half of a day on Wednesday, and cut specials and lost 1,000 students. With Prop 123, with 20x2020 funding, with the overrides that we've reinstated, we have never ever got back to the funding levels of 2008 and 2009. At our peak, we barely got above $8,000. This year, we had $162 million to educate 22,400 students. We're back below $8,000 per student again. Never have we come close to where we were 10 years ago, when my daughters were in pre-kindergarten. If we don't pass the MNO override, where are we headed? If we take 15% out of our budget and we're back into the 6,000s, do we conceivably believe that we can operate our schools at those types of levels? Do I need to figure out how we find a way to tutor our kids? Because what's going to happen to our high schools when we have to cut $650,000 to $2 million out of the funding of Chaparral, whether we base the cuts on per-campus or per-enrollment? Please give us a chance. We don't ask you to say, yes, we can have more money. We ask you to have the opportunity to ask our community to give us more money. Please give us that chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Daniels.
Thank you, board, for having me. I sent this email on June 4th. My name is Steve Daniels, and I'm a Kokopah parent, future Kokopah parent and community member. And due to the urgency of the situation, as it's already summer and this pertains to the published summer reading list, I am directly addressing the SUSD board members and CCing the principal and the superintendent. I'm writing because, like you, I want to see the students in our schools succeed. And I've seen firsthand the powerful impact reading can have on students' academic success. My concern, however, is with the subject material being presented as a part of the SUSD 6th grade summer reading 2019 per the Kokopah and SUSD website. Now, I've not reviewed all the books on the reading list in depth. However, my concerns are with the specific titles and descriptions of the following books, Ask Me No Questions, and Crossing the Wire. In this current political environment, there are a handful of highly-charged topics that are on the forefront, illegal immigration being one of them. Based on the following book descriptions from the SUSD site, I am concerned that the ASBA GBA staff ethics policy, AACR 7-2-205, is being violated here. Specifically, refrains from using school contacts and privileges to promote partisan politics, secretarian religious views, or selfish propaganda of any kind. In interest of time, I'll read one review. Crossing the Wire. When falling crop prices threaten his family with starvation, 15-year-old Victor Flores heads north in an attempt to, quote-unquote, cross the wire from Mexico into the United States, so he can find work and send money home. But with no money to pay a coyote, to pay the smugglers who sneak illegal workers across the border, Victor must struggle to survive as he jumps trains, stows away on trucks, and hikes grueling miles through the Arizona desert. So, I'd like to understand the following: Why it was thought appropriate to inject a politically-charged partisan and biased topic such as illegal immigration into the SUSD-recommended summer reading list, in effect injecting partisan politics into the classroom? As a note, it is concerning to me that the selected books present a partisan narrative that is sympathetic towards the unlawful act of illegal immigration into the United States. I look forward to your prompt response on this matter. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to the consent agenda, and I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Okay, we go now to our action items. First action item is 9A, the approval of advertisement of the 2019-2020 proposed expenditure budget. Are there, is there any discussion or questions?
Yes, President Beckman, members of the board, I would just like to point out, and we will have Mr. Gad as prepared to answer questions, but a reminder to, to you and also to the members of the audience, this is the approval of the advertisement of the proposed expenditure budget. The actual approval of the budget will be on June 25th. So, this is just approving the advertising of that meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from board members? Board Member Beckham?
Thank you, Dr. Kriegerd, for that clarification. So, in the information we received, we did get budget information. Should we be holding off to ask those questions until a later date, or since all we are approving is the advertisement?
Mr. Gad?
Members of the board, we intend a full public hearing with PowerPoint presentation on the 25th and expect questions from both the board and the audience. So, we'll be prepared to deal with that subject on the 25th. We can deal with some of it now, but the purpose of the 25th is really to give everyone an opportunity to ask questions about the budget.
That is the public hearing and the vote. But in the meantime, I would, I would welcome questions from you to share with, with Mr. Gad, so we are better prepared for that meeting.
Okay, so I'll just kind of list, so I'm not expecting any answers. But for the audience out there, what we receive is a summary and an outline of last year's budget compared to this year's budget, and there is percentage variances. And so, within there, there are some material changes that I would like to have explanations are. That would be on transportation expenses, food services, federal projects, and state projects. I've gotten a part of an answer for federal and state projects, and the response was on, it was, had to do with a decrease in the carryforwards. So, I guess the question then is, is why are we being conservative on our carryforwards compared to past years? And on food services, one of the explanations, and I realize that minimum wages is going up, but food services went down. So, that wouldn't explain why there was a drop in the food services budget. And those were the only ones that, that I recognized kind of were material, and so I had a question if there are any other material changes that I missed. To please share those with the board, because we may not see everything that you do. Also, I am wondering, in past presentations, you have presented five cash accounts in which there are restricted funds of approximately $26 million. And I realize we're looking at using $2 million from the surplus of revenues this year to balance the budget, but I am wondering, because the board has asked over the past couple months for you and Dr. Kriegerd to discuss and how we can use some of these cash balances in a sustainable way for programs and initiatives to help our student achievement, student engagement, and some maybe of our prevention programs or counselors. And so, I'm still waiting to see if you have any recommendations in that area. Thank you.
Any other questions? Board Member Kravitz?
Yeah, I just wanted to support what Mrs. Beckham said, and, you know, I had shared some of my questions also with you, Dr. Kriegerd. If we could address those while we discuss the budget, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Any further questions? Board Member Greenberg, no?
No.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the advertisement of the 2019-2020 proposed expenditure budget?
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Board Member Perleberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving now to our action item B, approval of the resolution calling for a special budget override election on November 5th, 2019. Are there any questions or discussion on the approval of a resolution calling for the special budget override election on November 5th, 2019?
Anybody?
Board Member Beckham?
Yes. On the actual proposal, I'm wondering if we can amend it to include in the recommendation portion, the actual amount of the sale that we are requesting? Am I in the right-
This is the override.
Oh, sorry. I got ahead of myself there.
Okay.
Do you have any comments about that?
Any questions on the resolution of calling for the special budget override election on November 5th?
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do have a comment.
Okay.
Do you have a comment?
Board Member Kravitz?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Since I returned to this district 17 years ago, I have supported and campaigned for every maintenance and operations override and bond issue that SUSD has placed on the ballot. I won't go into detail about how I have campaigned, but I've stood on street corners and health signs. And this evening, I will continue to extend this record by voting, may I express my vote? Okay, by voting. I'm so confused about what we're allowed to say and not say. Okay, we'll continue to extend this record by voting to place the maintenance and operations override on the ballot to give our voters a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Perleberg?
Well, since you're going to say that, I guess I will say this. To any of our community members that quite possibly heard some inaccurate speculation regarding my opinion on this matter, I hope you will accept this statement tonight as the actual truth, since it is straight from the horse's mouth. I have always believed that it is our community's right to decide on budget overrides and those questions, because our board has to make a lot of decisions regarding the dollars we have, the dollars we receive. We have to make a lot of decisions for our stakeholders and our parents, our students, our community. This is one decision our community gets to make for itself and gets to tell us, we approve or we don't approve of you having these dollars, and you better spend it well. So, I've always believed that. I too have walked the pavement for past overrides, and I hope that is a clear understanding of my opinion tonight and my vote. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? This just got a little bit-
I would like to-
Board Member Greenberg?
Yeah, so I, I just, I have three points, really. The first is, as the background states, the best interest of Scottsdale Unified School District will be served by this extension, and ultimately, that, that is our job. We are supposed to perform our duties to be, and execute them, and commit acts that are in the best interest of our district. So, I appreciate the district highlighting that in the background. I fully agree with that. I do want to note two things in the survey results that we were given. The first thing is the funding priorities. It's clear, although, you know, the sample size was small, but it does seem clear that two parents and guardians who were the predominant responders to the survey, that educational outcomes and educational opportunities are two of the key areas that they care about and would like to be promoted. In other words, the things like the teacher, teacher-student ratio, arts funding, other program funding. So, that is something we ought to keep in mind moving forward, should we approve the calling of an election on this, and, and people who do wish to help bring about a positive result there. The other point I want to make out is that in those survey results, about 79% of the respondents were parents and guardians of SUSD students, which means that it might not be entirely reflective of the community as a whole. In other words, it could be biased in favor of a, a positive result in an election of this type. However, despite that bias, it should be pointed out that over 50% of people responding said that the main reason they might not vote to support it would be the improper use of funds. And I want to make it clear, and I believe it should be made clear, that our district does have a policy on a number of these issues, on handling funds, including forming an internal auditing department. That's policy DIE, specifically called for that. But I think we really need to demonstrate to the community as a whole that not only are we asking them to invest in us and to trust us and to do what's right for the students that we serve and the communities that we serve, but that we will also be responsible in the use of those funds and how we will be responsible in the use of those funds. So, I just wanted to point those, those three things out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further statements, comments? Well, I've always been a very outspoken yes on getting this on the ballot. I think most people know. So, I am going now then to move. So I am going now then to move or make a motion to approve action item 9B, the approval of the resolution calling for a special budget override election on November 5, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckham, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we move on to action item 9C, issuing school improvement bonds of the district.
Do I have any questions or discussion?
Now you're up.
Now I'm... Okay. So just noting that I would like to have in the recommendation portion, the dollar amount of the actual sale or what it's not to exceed, as well as the not to exceed interest rate. And I believe that there is some issuance costs, so I would like to at least have that up under the funding area as well, and possibly could be put in the recommendation. And we can just use kind of an average of the last two sales, since I know that we don't have the exact dollar amount yet. I had sent over a question about the dollar amount of that funding, and I was wondering if you had an opportunity to look at it. You had provided us a chart, and within that chart, it had the cash balance that we have on hand, if we sold the $60 million in cash, and that at the end, we would have a balance of approximately $37 million. So my question was, because you're also anticipating in going out to the fourth bond sale this time next year, if we should be selling just $30 million worth of bonds at this sale, and then combining the additional 30 that we would not be selling this time next year, when we would actually be having, being the other possibly one or two rebuilds at that time, so that we could actually save the taxpayers some money in interest?
Madam President, members of the board, it's kind of a balancing act as to the dollar amounts, the length of time, the interest expense, the interest rates that now exist in the economy, which are quite attractive, the timing of district decisions relative to approval of major remodeling, which are...
Just a little closer. Sorry.
Let me try it this way.
Oh, there you go.
I bet that works better, right?
Yeah.
So the chart that Miss Beckham refers to is in the background information in the agenda item. It basically indicates that if we include the dollar amounts indicated for those projects that have been generally approved by the board, that we, once the GMP for HoHoCom is approved, at that point, without a sale, we would exceed the amount of available cash balance. So anticipating what that approval might consist of, then we need to have a minimum of $23 million resolved in terms of the deficit. That then, if we have a $30 million bond election, would only leave us $7 million as a buffer for maintenance plans, security plans, transportation, all the other components that were included in the bond. So that means that you really can't move ahead with another school GMP after HoHoCom, because you don't have the capacity in which to do it. So rather than have that as an obstacle for moving that facility plan forward, we felt it important then that we need to include at least one more major remodel, rebuild, whatever you want to call it, set aside some $20 million or so dollars in which to do that. So if you subtract that from the $36 million that we're proposing here with the $60 million bond sale, it would still only leave us $16 million to deal with a couple of years of a maintenance plan and a transportation plan. So when you take into account all of those variables, it would seem that if you had only a $30 million sale, you would almost immediately be back doing another sale at an issuance cost of $200,000 per sale. And the frequency of that would be, I mean, once that third school especially would be identified, that would immediately mean that the GMP could not be approved of a third school unless we did more than the $30 million that you've just talked about. So we just looked at the balance and said if we did two $60 million sales, one now, that would at least get us through a year and a half, two years, of having authority for this board to be able to move ahead with whatever remodeling, rebuild they wanted to do, and save that $60 million for the last sale, and it would be an equal amount. And we didn't have an impact on the tax rate by doing this, and we've got a positive interest rate environment. It seemed when you took into account all of the different variables here, especially the cash flow variables, that $60 million was the more prudent number to use, rather than understate it and then have to come back to the board again within 12 months saying, you can't approve a GMP for a third school, you don't have the capacity to do that, we immediately need to move to a bond sale. That didn't seem to be the best alternative, at least in my mind. So that's why, that's why that 60 is here, and it does negate, it does save us $200,000 of issuance, because the next, the finishing round, round four, I guess it would be, is a full 60. So there's not a fifth sale to have that may have been additionally contemplated. We can do all of this in four sales without affecting the tax rate. So it made the most sense, I think, to the administration to propose what we're proposing.
Board Member Beckham?
So as I understand it, then this chart that you gave us does not have all of the expenses that you're anticipating for the next year. I was assuming, because you have the maintenance, you have student transportation, and this is what is in the budget, so that this is what was happening, but now you're saying that there's actually more that needs to be added to this?
Yes, I mean...
Going into the beginning of 2020.
We're indicating these are in the bond budget, and they're annualized, as you know. And so those numbers reflect next year, beginning this coming July, next year's expenditures in those areas. If we did that and did a $30 million sale, we would not have enough money at that point to do anything more than is listed here within that 12-month period, especially authorizing a GMP for a school that's not listed here. And we felt that that was just too limiting. And that is, I think the board's interested in us moving ahead with a plan for a third school that we would then do a fairly major rebuild, remodel, and that's not doable in terms of an authorization with a $30 million bond within the next 12 months. That's not doable.
So we were given a timetable, and that, it's just confusing to me, because the timetable that was given is that that remodel would not be going for authorization until mid-year 2020. So, and we could be doing a, we did a nine, I think it was nine months between the last two bond sales, so you can do it if you need to. So I'm just confused, because the information that was provided does not correspond with what you've just said, because you also gave us a chart that showed you were going to have three bond sales, one now, one at $37 million for 2020, and one at $37 million for 2021. So I am just a little confused on the information. So before I can vote, I would need to have updated information, because I think it does save our taxpayers a lot of money. And we learned from the last two bond sales that, in which we did not use the funds, that it would have saved us some money. So I just need to get the correct information. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Gad, regarding the cost of issuing the bonds, I had asked you, and I was kind of curious, is it a flat fee per issuance, or is it a percentage of the total issuance?
The cost of issuance, that component consisting primarily of legal and those other things, and we have a couple of people here in the audience that can explain it much better than I, but those are pretty standard dollar amounts connected with whatever the sale amount might be. It does not vary significantly with the dollar value of the sale. What does vary is the underwriting fee connected with the value of the bonds. And the underwriting fee is not a cost of issuance, at least it's not typically defined that way. It's defined as a cost of the sale. So, Bill, Mr. Bill Davis, if Madam President, you could allow him to speak a little bit to that subject. He is our financial advisor with Piper Jaffray and can deal with it in a better way than I.
Because you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Are we saving money by, is it, you know, are we losing money if we issue a bunch of multiple times, and there's a flat fee per time? Or is it based as a percentage on the total? So we're going to, no matter how many times we go out and issue a package, it's going to be the same amount?
You will be saving money with two sales versus three sales. So the cost of this is $200,000, whether it was $30 million or whether it's 60. If we choose to make that into two sales instead of one, the cost now becomes $400,000, because you have different timeframes in which that sale is occurring. So you do save, in this plan, two $60 million sales will save the district a minimum of $200,000. The underwriting fee, as I understand it, Bill, would generally be the same, whether we have more than a $30 million sale or not. But if, Madam Chair, Bill Davis would be a better person, I think, to answer this.
Bill, can you say who you are for the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger, my name is Bill Davis. I am a managing director with Piper Jaffray here in Phoenix, and we're serving as your financial advisor. It's a very good question. As Mr. Gad mentioned, the underwriter's discount or the underwriting fee is based, is a percentage of the principal amount of bonds sold. Now, there are some minimums oftentimes, so depending upon how that contract's written, you know, at certain size of a bond issue, it will vary as a straight percentage. If you get down to certain levels, there's just a flat fee, so that could be just a solid dollar amount. For legal fees, financial advisor fees, and rating agency fees, which are the other primary components of cost of issuance, they're not set on a pure percentage basis. There are some minimums there. And so you will be saving, you know, the fewer bond issues you have, certain fees are going to be exactly they are as they would be, as Mr. Gad said, if there's one or three. But where you'll save money is by avoiding those minimums on multiple sales, like say multiple $30 million sales or multiple $20 million sales. You will save money by having, say, two $60 million sales. If that...
I understand. And so I think, you know, listening to Board Member Beckham, and I don't mean to take your time, I know this is not the most exciting subject for some people, but we are curious. So her point being, and I understood her question earlier, which was, if we were to go out for more than we need right now, are we accruing interest, or are we having to pay out interest right away? Therefore, where are we saving money? Are we actually taking more than we need and running up the tab, per se, than if we waited? Have you done a comparison analysis on whether if we take the majority out now versus a smaller amount, and then a smaller amount later, are we better off doing the bigger piece now, when you look at it from an interest perspective?
So it's a very good analysis to do. And so to start with, if you sell, whatever you sell today, you are going to start accruing interest. And the interest expense on a bond issue is typically the largest expense you're going to have. There's no question about that. What you have to look at are, you know, are there savings from entering into contracts sooner, so like guaranteed maximum price contract? Would you potentially save money by being able to do it six months or a year earlier? Does that fit into your capital improvement plans? Where is the interest rate market today? And where do you think it's going to be, say, 12 months from now? You know, but we are in a very, very low interest rate environment today. When you sell those bonds, the proceeds are going to be deposited into your account at the treasurer's office, and those dollars will be invested on your behalf. So today, if you sold bonds, I'm estimating that your interest rate, you know, whether it's $30 million or $60 million, is going to be at or slightly below 3%. The treasurer is going to turn around and invest those dollars during construction, before you spend them, and they're going to earn, today, they're earning somewhere between 2 and 2.5%. Those dollars that they earn go to your debt service account and help offset the interest expense that the tax rate is set to pay. So your net cost today is going to be somewhere under 1%.
Okay.
And so really, the question is, you know, the timing of your construction needs, where interest rates are today. If they're, you know, if they're lower today, you're going to be much better off selling those bonds today versus waiting a year from now or three years from now. Last thing, though, that you do need to pay attention to is that the tax regulations, the IRS regulations governing the issuance of tax exempt bonds, which these are, stipulate that you have to have a reasonable expectation before you sell to be able to spend all of the proceeds within three years. So if that fits that three-year window, you meet the federal tax regs, and then you can move forward. I mean, again, I think, you know, fitting it into or making a determination of what your capital improvement needs are. Are there advantages to having those dollars in hand today? There could be several. Or, you know, and nobody has a crystal ball, but what I can tell you is that we are at almost all-time lows, interest rates right now. So it's not a bad time to borrow money. There's a lot of demand for bonds like the district's bonds, and we've seen some really, really low levels of interest rates. So it's a great time to borrow.
So really, we're looking at, you made a great point, and I appreciate that, the little, the risk and the spread of having to borrow versus pay, and maybe the interest rates go up in the meantime, so offsetting those two. So perfect.
And, you know, I mean, it's, you know, the math is not that complicated. You know, so 1% on $30 million over the course of one year is going to be your net cost versus what might your interest expense be over that $30 million that's sold, say, 12 or 18 months from today, over the life of that bond? And so there is some risk. Nobody knows if rates are going to be higher or lower 12 months from now, but by locking in that rate today, you do eliminate any interest rate risk.
Thank you. Board Member Beckham?
Thank you for the explanation, because I think it brings up a couple of points that I would just like to share with the board members of the last two bond sales. And I wasn't aware of the spread in between, so that I think that's very important for taxpayers to understand, that those funds then are held at the treasury. And I wasn't aware they were getting as high as they were, and that differential is about 1%. So we're not really looking at 4% or 5% on the last bonds, because on the last bond sale, the reason that we did a little bit more than what we ended up using was because we were afraid interest rates were going to go up. And even though we didn't make the decision just based solely upon that, we have now learned, hey, we were lucky. The rates came down. But what that does mean is that we have probably a little bit bigger spread, and we haven't been using those funds, and so we have been paying on the, using the taxpayers' dollars' money. So what I'm concerned about is, I was given a chart that showed we are going to have $37 million by the time that we would spend, we would go out for the next bond sale. But what I've heard tonight is that that figure is probably not correct. So I would like to see whether this gets approved tonight or doesn't, I would like to see an accurate account of what you are anticipating you will be spending, that timeline that was just mentioned, because that is so important, to be able to make your analysis, to know if you are actually saving any money. Because if you're saving, you know, if it's 3% on $30 million, that's a lot more than if it is, you know, $150,000, $200,000 on the issuance. So then I'll go back to, you provided us a chart that showed three bond sales. I got the impression that that's what you were looking at doing. Did you?
It was.
Okay, so there's been a change.
Until we heard...
So if you could share, are there any other changes that we're unaware of before we make this decision?
That view changed when I think at the last meeting, we talked about priorities and goals for the district. I heard that the capital plan was going to be moving ahead more rapidly than we may have thought at one point in time. There was an interest level in doing something more than just HoHoCom, and it was going to occur in the fairly near future. That's, you know, you try to read what people are saying and what the intent of that is. If that is the case, and that turns out to be the case, our recommendation here allows you to make that decision without another bond sale. If you choose to move ahead in the next 12 months by committing to a GMP that's not on this list, that is not doable with the $30 million sale. So we were attempting, Mr. Dr. Krieger and I were attempting to try to read where we thought the board might want to go with this future capital building plan, and wanted you to have the flexibility to do that by having enough sale money, especially in light of the relatively small interest cost that there might be relative to what Mr. Davis just talked about. So we, you know, we basically did this and came up with a solution or the recommendation that we felt you needed to be able to do what you wanted to do... the recommendation that we felt you needed to be able to do what you wanted to do, and we knew that thirty million dollars could be a limiting factor in that decision, and we didn't want that to be the case. That's why you've got the recommendation here that you do.
So, we received this information on Thursday, and I understand that there were changes between now and Thursday. I would appreciate notice and what those changes are in the future, please.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All right. Do I have a motion to approve Action Item 9C issuing school improvement bonds of the district?
No, moved.
Board Member Greenberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Board Member Beckham opposed. Okay, moving forward now to Action Item D, approval of the selection of the Self-Insurance Trust Board Trustees and Administrator. Are there any questions or discussion on the approval of the selection of the Self-Insurance Trust Trustees and Administrator?
Excuse me, President Beckman, members of the board, I think Mr. Gad can address the issue of the board members that are being recommended.
Happy to. As the board will recall, the trust document authorizes a board, a trustee board of five members. No more than one can be a governing board member, no more than one can be an employee, and so therefore the other three are community members. That's what this recommendation does, and I will, I will detail it to some extent. By having Board Member Kravitz there, she has the experience coming from the trust board previously, that's going to be invaluable for us moving forward, because we have that knowledge base to rely on. The CFO makes, I think, pretty good sense, having that person, because of the nature of this trust is very financially driven, that that would be the employee representative and would provide the most input, valuable input to the trust. Then, I remember the, the governing board discussing that they would like to see the backgrounds of the other three individuals, have some insurance or financial background. And, of course, they all need to be district residents, and so that's what you have with the other three individuals. Two of the three both work for financially oriented companies, one of which just addressed the board. Piper Jaffray is the district's financial advisor when it comes to bonding, not, not activities that the trust would be involved in. One of the other individuals comes from the underwriter that the district has chosen to underwrite the bonds during the sale. That would be Stiefel. Did I pronounce the nation correctly? Thank you. So, both of these people come from financial environments, they work in them full times, and you can see their backgrounds from the bios that are here. So they are very capable, qualified people in which to be able to most effectively run, in my opinion, the trust. The last one is, is Wally, who I have known for a long time, and I think the board knows him also. He has been a consultant in a number of districts, including this one. He is a very interested, concerned, active citizen within the district, cares dearly about the district and its facilities, and, and I don't need to tell you some other things, you know who he is, and you know that he will be a very dedicated and loyal person to wanting to make sure that this trust is successful. So that is the background of the trust board members that are being recommended to you. I'm proud of all of them, I think all of them will do an exceptionally good job. I think if the board chooses to, to honor this recommendation, you will have selected one of the best trust boards that you could put together. That, Dr. Krikert, is my take on the five. I've had trust boards before over lots and lots of years. This is a very qualified group of people, and I think that they will make all of the best decisions the district could, could want. Any questions that you might have? There is a trust board meeting scheduled for June twentieth, so that the district can move forward with this insurance coverages for next year, and that's important to do. And I want the trust board to do that, rather than administratively us doing it, but obviously we have to have coverage in place July one. That's a necessity. So we need to get this board in place so they can make those decisions, I've become familiar with what those pieces are and the cost of those things, and who the vendors are that are providing those insurance coverages for the district. So it makes sense that we move ahead as quickly as we can in getting these trustees selected so that we have the best, we have the best knowledge base that we can have.
And I would like to add that we, we had a well-qualified trust board, and people have chosen to finish their terms, so in searching, what we were looking for was somebody, some people who also instilled confidence in what we are doing with the district money, with the taxpayers' money, as we know that that continues to be an issue, so we were asking for people who had either a financial or health insurance background, and so to get people who are involved in those areas, as, as the two are, and, and Mr. Graham, who has been involved in school district business and in management consulting for, for a number of years. I believe that we have, as Mr. Gad said, a highly qualified group of people for that trust that will make decisions based on the knowledge that they bring, as well as the best interest of the district. So I, I'm confident that, that this trust board will instill that respect and confidence in what we are doing in the community. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Board Member...
I do, or somebody else.
Okay, Board Member Beckham, and then Board Member Greenberg.
Just real quick, just for transparency, what was the process that was used? Because I was asked that question, and I couldn't answer it.
We, we put out notices in several places called community members that are, that are well-connected. Mr. Gad began searching, he could tell you about, about his process. It was, it was kind of old-fashioned beating the bushes, because nobody was coming forward at first, and so we started looking for specific skills, people who are active in the community, who understand Scottsdale, but have those backgrounds that I mentioned.
I looked at the, I looked at the vendor side of the district's operations, of which we, as you know, we have many, many, many vendors. I concentrated on that group that I knew had some insurance background and some financial background. I also tried to select those vendors who I thought could easily relate to a fairly complicated subject like self-insurance, and as large as this trust is. And I also wanted to be sure that the vendors that I asked if they would be willing to participate had the furthest interest, I mean, they had, they had no conflict of interest with dealing with the trust because of the type of business that they were in. And that's why these two vendors are predominantly being recommended to you, is they deal with areas that do not affect the day-to-day operations of an insurance trust. They are bonding agents, and that's what, that's what their, their job is, and is not something that I anticipate the trust being involved in bonds. So that's why they were selected. But again, one of the important things is their interest in the district, their dedication to the district as a vendor over many years. My, working with them in the past, and their, their competence, their capability, their knowledge, and my respect for them is why they are being recommended to you. And I wanted to move forward with establishing this trust, as Board Member Kravitz knows, to get this new trust underway. We just need to get some people appointed so we can do the business of the district. That's basically the...
Okay. I have a question, but Board Member Greenberg?
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Gad, thanks for, and everyone else, Dr. Krikert, for working so hard on trying to fill these positions. The firm I spoke to that I had, I had hoped might have provided some individuals who are experienced specifically in healthcare, where I confirm that they, that they believe they had a conflict of interest and therefore could not send any, anyone to serve on the board, which seems to be the case often, as it is a, a smaller city, and, you know, people tend to know each other and have worked with one another, so I appreciate that. I, you know, it is, I do find it a little unfortunate that we don't have anyone, it seems, who are specifically versed in healthcare issues, although I know at a minimum, Mr. Gad brings quite a lot of experience there, so it's a start. I, I would say that if people do come forward at some point, we can always expand the board to include additional, additional members who might have that experience or, or knowledge, so that might, that might be the, the time to do that. But I would just say, generally speaking, I mean, I felt, I know, I believe there's only been one meeting so far of this, of the trust before it was reconstituted in the new trust document, and I don't know how President Beckman feels, but to me, it just seems like kind of a little opaque. I don't necessarily, reading, reading just the minutes and everything aren't, isn't always super clear what's going on, but if those documents are made public, both board members and to just the general public as well, the minutes of those meetings and everything, I think that would go a long way towards that transparency, so that's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and, and I agree with Board Member Greenberg. We had discussed before adding the trust component to our website with the documents that are, that go along with it regarding statements and the actual trust document and minutes from the meetings. I know that we can have, we have five trustees, we can add more, should we want to...
It's a minimum of five.
I would like to find and keep looking for that medical piece, because I think that would be a nice kind of well-rounded board then. Secondly, the conflict of interest, you meant that, or you mentioned that, and they're going to sign this now, but we do have considerable cash going, coming from the medical piece into the trust now, and surely that will be invested. We talked about that investment policy statement before, and will we be doing our due diligence to make sure, because we have two people that work with financial institutions, that we are not investing in anything, obviously, that, because they'll sign it now, and there's no conflict now, but we will be making sure that that is not a conflict later, should there be recommendations for CDs or bonds, et cetera, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Action Item 9D, the approval of selection of the Self-Insurance Trust Board Trustees and Administrator?
So moved.
Board Member Perlerberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, Action Item E, approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty English Language Arts Middle and High School Supplemental Book List.
President Beckman, members of the board, I would like to, once again, I think you've all met Dr. Garin, who is acting right now as a contracted consultant, two days a week for the district until July first, when she will become Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, which will be full-time, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. But anyway, she has been working, along with Cheryl Redner, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and with various staff members that they will explain, to bring to you a review and recommendations for our supplemental materials. So, Dr. Garin, welcome.
Thank you. Madam President, Governing Board Members, Dr. Krikert, Ms. Silveis, Cabinet, and guests, I am very excited to be in SUSD and cannot wait to be full-time. Maybe not seven days a week, but full-time. I'm here with members of Teaching and Learning today to present two things to you, both the supplemental materials, novels, which are books, and nonfiction and fiction, and our supplemental materials recommendations. This evening, I have with me Cheryl Redner, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Paul Becker, English Language Arts Coach for the district, Dr. Chris Treet, Director of Secondary Curriculum, Dr. Tim Fountain, Director of Curriculum, and Dr. Mei Long Wong, Director of Gifted and Accelerated Programs. And I want to thank them for their countless hours that they put through this process and all their work, so thank you so much. I want to take you briefly through an agenda on what we're going to cover this evening. First, we'll share working definitions of adopted, supplementary, and ancillary curriculum. We'll do a quick recap of the September twenty-seventh study session, where this board gave input and also some direction to Teaching and Learning. We'll spend a little time on overview of Arizona Statutory Language related adopted to adopted text and supplemental material, and we'll also review governing board policy. Then we're going to provide you an update on the process that was developed to vet supplemental books. We'll present a proposal to develop process for vetting of supplemental materials, and then we're going to seek your approval tonight on both items. So just a quick recap of the governing board study session. I love that you have these on video, I was able to watch it and learned so much. Just as a quick recap, I noticed there was a lot of discussion surrounding what is adopted text, what is supplemental material, and what is ancillary material. And I think it's so important that we all develop consensus around this as we move forward and work to develop policies surrounding this. The governing board stated that we need a process for vetting novels, summer reading assignments, that's inclusive of stakeholders, including parents. There was a lot of discussion on the role of when someone, when something maybe goes a little awry, and what is the role of teaching and learning, what is the role of the Human Resources Department, and what is the role of the principal as the instructional leader? And we also talked about professional development, that teachers are professionals, and we want them to be innovative and have rigor and relevance in their classroom, and so they're making decisions on an hourly, daily, minute-by-minute basis on how to enhance their instruction, so we want to provide them professional development in that so they can, help them make those decisions. So quickly, Arizona State statute is very broad in this area. In adopted text, it's actually very, very specific. So you go from district to district, you'll see that the districts all have very similar processes in related to adopted text and supplemental material with that adoption. This district just went through a robust K-12 mathematics adoption that was very successful, and there were timelines, there were statutory requirements that were involved, we had to display the materials for a certain length of time, there was input, so all of these things had to be followed before a recommendation could be brought to you for your approval. So the statutes really get into specific language on that, which is super helpful, and when you go from district to district, you see that being handled in a similar fashion. Supplemental materials is a little more vague in its language, and what we've noticed when we have sought input from other districts, and also, of course, from our council, is that some districts put forth both supplemental materials and supplemental books, some districts take neither to the governing board. They follow the correct procurement process with finance, but they don't bring it forward for recommendations. We found other districts bring one forward, and some other districts bring the other forward, but not both. So it's because that Arizona statutory language is so vague that we see it being interpreted in different ways. But in discussion with stakeholders, we feel it would be best practice to bring both for your approval and consideration, so that's why we're here tonight. We also did a deep dive into governing board policy. We want to make sure any recommendation we bring to you follows our own policy, and our policy really talks about access to instructional materials by parents, that we're required to provide free textbooks to our students, the adoption process for textbooks, and the supplemental materials involved with that, and if there are any objections, that whole opt-out process that works really well, when there's a specific assignment or book that a parent does not want their child to partake in for various reasons. So that's all in our governing board language. All right, the meat and the potatoes of the presentation today, the definitions. So these are our current working definitions in Scottsdale. Adopted text and materials is the easiest one. It's text and the materials that go with the adopted text that are taken through that formal adoption cycle. It includes committee work, and I think your committee had something like ninety people on it, it was a robust committee. Statutory timelines are met, and there's a governing board approval process, so that's pretty clear. Supplementary books and novels are sets of novels, both fiction and nonfiction, on a reserved book list, and it's... list, and it's called a reserved book list because when one student goes from seventh to eighth to ninth, there might be a very popular novel. We don't want them to read When the Red Fern Grows three years in a row. Keep watching that fern grow over and over again, it might be a bit repetitive. So that reserved book list is to help make sure there's no repetition, and then we also look at placing them on a list for appropriateness of content and rigor, which is very important. There is a stakeholder process and a rubric used, and Ms. Redner will get into detail on that. Supplemental materials, our working definition of supplemental materials are Teaching and Learning Department-supported materials. So the district could provide coaching on that, financial support on that. It's used at multiple sites. It's not one worksheet a teacher pulls, or one assessment created by a teacher that's pulled and used. It was interesting today, I just heard the presentation by Dr. Chestnut, and he mentioned Stanford Harmony, a really great social-emotional support curriculum that we're considering for K-5. So once that happens, once we start to implement, Teaching and Learning will be supporting that training. We will be going out hand-in-hand with Student Services and making sure they have the professional development they need. We may be providing resources, human resources or financial resources. So that Stanford Harmony would be an obvious choice for our supplemental material list. Ancillary materials, we are defining as teacher-selected materials to enhance curriculum. So just to give you a couple real-life Scottsdale examples, adopted texts, we just adopted Big Ideas, our elementary math materials, we have our Lit Anthologies, and we have our Core Knowledge Language Arts. So those are all adopted texts that went through the adopted cycle, and of course, there's so many more. That's just three examples. For supplemental materials, these are tried and true and Teaching and Learning-supported, both financially and with human resources, so a principal can call and say, "My fourth graders are really having some struggles with reading comprehension. I'm seeing it in our test scores, the teachers are talking about it in our professional learning communities, you know, what can we do?" And Paul from English Language Arts can say, "You know, we've really got this Read 180, Reading Comprehension Program. Why don't you come take a look at it, and we'll see if it's the right fit for you." So we have the expertise and knowledge to support it and bring it to a campus, if appropriate. Another one is Spalding or Brain Pop. Ancillary materials, a couple examples of what teachers bring to the classroom every day through their talent and creativity, could be a social studies teacher with a historical primary source document to bring history to life in their classroom pulled from the internet. It could be a guest speaker. We really encourage our teachers to create some of their own formative assessments based on their lessons, to make sure that they are really gauging Teaching and Learning and student comprehension right away. So when we're asking them to make that assessment, and they're making it specifically for their class, that would be considered an ancillary material. So those are just some examples of that.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Redner now for oversight of curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Good evening. It is a privilege to be here to talk a little bit about what we do in the Teaching and Learning Department. So I want to talk about the work that happens with standards-driven instruction. So we've talked about the standards. We want to make sure that the Scottsdale teachers are teaching the standards that are aligned to state standards. The work that happens there comes primarily through our curriculum app. So some of you remember, last year, we made the advancement of over 100 curriculum apps, which were updated. They're available to all teachers, to the public online. That work is done through our curriculum coaches and our curriculum teams, and so I want to make sure to define what that team looks like. Our curriculum coaches, and Paul is one of them in Language Arts, works with a group of teachers representing every school. So for example, if it's a seventh grade Language Arts class, every school has someone sitting at the table, they're looking at standards, they're making sure that those standards are where they want them to be on the map, and then those assessments align to that standard. So we want to make sure we're teaching what we're testing and vice versa. So that work, those curriculum apps, again, we finished, we completed around, close to 150 last year. I believe at this time, we're close to 300. This is not a finished process, this is continuous. If you think about our standards changing, science and social studies standards are going under construction and changing in the state, so we continue to move those standards around. But even in subjects where they're not changing, again, Language Arts, we want to make sure the standards are where they are on the map, in the right time, the sequence of time of year. So through our coaches and our curriculum teams, it's very important that we continue to look at that standards-based instruction. One of our focuses in Teaching and Learning is to continue to support our principals as instructional leaders. So we really want to take the time to work within our world and do what's best for students through the instructional leadership on our campuses. So one of the ways that we support them is to look at, and for purposes of these novels, is to make sure that principals are aware of what's going on in the classroom. And again, on September 27th, when we did that work study, we talked about kind of those bumpers of if and when something goes awry, what we do about that. But we want to pre-arm people, we want to make sure that the principals know what's going on. So there's a couple of ways that that happens, there's many ways. One, first and foremost, is teachers create syllabi. They're online, parents have those at their fingertips, that's shared with them. Principals are also looking at those syllabi to make sure that they know what's going on in the classroom and/or lesson plans are available. So teachers obviously create lesson plans, principals have the opportunity to look at those lesson plans to see what's happening. Again, we want to make sure it's aligned to instruction, and as Dr. Guerin said, we want to give them some freedom to make some choices, but again, keep those bumpers up. Conversations happen in PLCs and collaborative meetings. So again, principals, instructional leaders, our administration on campuses are having those conversations in those collaborative meetings. The work happening, again, back to those curriculum meetings, is some collaboration there as well. We want to make sure that the schools, again, if we take Language Arts in middle school, that different teachers are talking about ways that they're presenting those standards. So again, they're calibrating against each other during those curriculum times. Principals are visible, they're in classrooms, they see what's going on, they have those conversations with students. What are you learning? Tell me what's going on, and with our teachers. So we want to make sure to continue to support that. When we start talking about ways that, that Teaching and Learning can support our principals, we look at places like the beginning of the year next year, when we work to provide during our administrative retreat, what ways can we continue to support and provide professional development for our instructional leaders? So different ways, and then we're always, we're ready to be there and continue to support our teachers. There however, may be a time or two where Human Resources does have to get involved. If a teacher is really not making good instructional decisions, and we need to take it to that level, that's where, that's turned over to a different level. We want to be completely transparent and communicative. So again, if you look at our curriculum apps, they're available online, they're accessible, they're updated. We want to make sure they're accessible to the public, as well as to our teachers, and create resources that are available for them online. So, I'm going to talk about the supplemental book list. So again, we're talking about the books, the novel studies that teachers use in their classrooms. So I'm going to give a little bit of history and talk about where we've come and what we're going to continue to do. As Dr. Guerin mentioned, this is a reserved book list. We don't want students reading the same book and watching that fern growing for three years. So we want to make sure they fall into the right grade level, and we really wanted to look at the books that, we went to look at the books that have been taught in Scottsdale, excuse me, historically, and so they looked at those lists, and I'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. There's a middle school version, and there's a high school version, obviously, two different conversations. And the true purpose of that initial conversation was to reserve titles, so that we kept them in the right lane, and they're appropriate complexity-wise, content-wise, Lexile level-wise, and we'll talk about that in a second. So I'm going to talk about high school first, because middle school took a little bit of a different direction just because of the timeline. When Paul started this process, there were multiple lists found in Scottsdale. So the first thing he wanted to do was make it reader-friendly, and we wanted to really think about what that process was going to be, to review those books. Where should we add, do we need to review them, are they in the right place? So we took that on, we asked him to take that on, which he did a great job with. He met with curriculum teams to revise that initial list, and to look at the current practice, and how those books landed on the list, and we're digging back many, many, many years. So he needed to dig through with that team. We talked about, Dr. Guerin talked about the stakeholders. It's very important to me that you understand that this is led by the curriculum department, but every school has representation on that team. So they looked at the grade levels, they looked at the books, they met with department leads, and they followed the same process. So the curriculum team met, and the department leads met, and they compared that initial book list with other sister districts. We want to calibrate with other districts. Where the Red Fern Grows is at one grade level in Scottsdale, it should be pretty close in our sister district. So we were able to work together with other places and make sure, it doesn't have to be lockstep, but make sure we're pretty close. And so then they assigned those book titles to grade levels. They created a new format, they created a draft, and last January 7th was a full-day PD day. And so Paul was able to introduce that list and hand it to every secondary Language Arts teacher. So they were able to look at that and ask any questions. He got their feedback, and then in January and February, he met with those curriculum teams again, and took all the input and collaborated into one place, into that first draft. So that, so I talked about what that curriculum team looks like, and they talked about that appropriate placement, and that we're looking at content and we're looking at complexity. And so we want to come to consensus that where we land books is where they belong. At the conclusion of calibrating that, those lists, the list was shared out with department leads, and they were to bring them back to the schools. They shared their list, and they brought it back to their respective departments for feedback, and then principals received at both the middle level, well, for this purpose, at the high school level, during their March 28th principals' meeting. So again, it was shared with department leads, it was shared with curriculum leads, and then to principals, again, looking for input, making any adjustments if necessary. So, this is not a done deal, just like our curriculum apps, this is always open for discussion. They're reviewed annually by the curriculum teams, and these curriculum meetings are met, are scheduled, they're scheduled. This is not the only purpose of the curriculum team, this is part of it, and so this is a regularly scheduled meeting. The people who serve on these committees do a lot of work, and they meet with, again, all of our curriculum coaches. But this is a regular meeting, this is part of those meetings, and I'm going to talk about other revisions that can happen as well. So if you look at the supplemental future book list revisions, a teacher suggests the novel change to a department, to their department lead, the department lead brings it to the curriculum team, and the curriculum team makes a decision. They know the recommendation of, they've decided through conversation where that book lands. Or they don't. They do not come to a consensus, if you look down, and they take it to the committee, and they make a recommendation. They use a rubric, which I believe you received in your packets, to really intensely look at that information and make a decision on where they rank as far as appropriateness. Again, those conversations are happening in those teams, in those meetings, and they want to come to a consensus and make sure those decisions are made with as much information as possible in their minds. So that's high school. I'm going to talk a little bit about middle school, which is a little bit different, because in 2017, the decision was made to move to novels as anchor tests, text in this district. It was a similar process, I believe, where they met, they brought together the books, they had input from their stakeholders, and they put those books in certain, on certain grade levels, in certain grade levels. Our goal is, they decided where they would be in both general ed and in honors, in Language Arts. That, again, following the same revision process, they looked at the several different lists, they sent a draft for input, and then we're going to continue to look at that. And I'll share with you that I know that they've gone through several books where a teacher or student or parent says, "Can we add this book?" And I know that that committee did work this year and added several books. Principals came forward, and so they were able to go through that process and add some books. It's never a stringent deal. There's always an option for movement. So our goal is for next year, again, this happened two years ago where that initial list happened, is to continue with that process, and again, open it back up and make sure we continue to keep those conversations open. So a little bit different. Now, that supplemental book committee, remember, if they can't make a decision, come to a consensus in their curriculum teams, they go to the supplemental book committee level. And so we have representation from stakeholders. Currently, there's one person per school represented, so we have teachers, media specialists, administrators, district personnel, and parents serving on those committees, and they gather their input. It takes them three to four weeks to go through a book at that time, I'm looking at Paul. So they go through, they read it, they really analyze it, and have some pretty intense discussions to make sure that they're making a good decision. And they meet on as-needed basis, different than our curriculum teams. This happens when a book, if and when a book comes forward, they'll call that meeting together. So if someone, and that would happen if a teacher proposes a new book, or a community member wants a review, or we need to look at their level change, maybe a book's not in the right place. So we look at those Lexile levels, and they really have those conversations. And they use the rubric, which I talked about, and they provide that recommendation through consensus, and they have been, had an opportunity to add some as necessary. So at this time, we're seeking approval from you as to the approval of the proposed middle school and high school supplemental lists. I believe you have them, and I'll open that for discussion.
Okay, questions and discussion from board members?
Hi.
Is this? Board Member Greenberg.
Just to clarify, is this about, are we asking for discussions or questions about both the presentation we just heard, as well as the next action item, the supplemental book list, or no?
No, the action item-
No, only the first, yeah.
Yeah, right now is approval of the English Language Arts Middle and High School Supplemental Book List.
No, supplemental materials list?
No, book list, books.
These are classroom supplemental materials.
Yes, the novels.
I, wait, I'm-
I think we need further clarification. You have two action items.
We do.
Yeah, I think we made that.
Right. We do have two action items.
Supplemental materials list.
Is that what you're asking for action on first?
Yes, so the supplemental novels.
You have two action items. One is Item 9E, approval of 2018/19 Supplemental Materials List?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're asking the board?
And what's the next one?
The next one is approval of 1920 ELA Middle and High School Supplemental Book List.
Okay, so they're reversed.
So what you're first asking for is Item 9F?
Yeah, I apologize, yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
So we are doing the supplemental materials list?
No, the books.
You need-
Well, that's E.
Yeah.
That's correct.
You are doing 9E.
I thought it was correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the board knows what they're voting on.
Right now, is this high, middle school and high school supplemental-
Yeah, it is E, it is first.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next is the supplemental materials. Could you, like-
I think in board book, it's flipped.
Tell us the difference between the two.
So I think that's the confusion. In board book, I think it's flipped. That may be our confusion there.
Well, the agenda has us following the presentation, that right now, E is the Middle and High School Supplemental Book List.
Okay, so why don't I just take a second to explain the difference, because it is confusing.
Please do, that's what we talked about earlier.
All right, so 9E. It is in board book, yeah.
So I do, I mean, I do have discussion items, a couple points for discussion about the supplemental book list, which I'm happy to go into if nobody else has comments, but I can wait till the end.
Board Member Greenberg, go ahead.
So I think there are three things. First and foremost, the book list and books on the list have obviously been a topic of discussion. We've had two parents, I think, since, well, two community members since January 2018 to present date that I'm aware of, who have raised issues with, you know, books on these lists. And there were kind of three points I wanted to make. The first, of course, is that we currently do have in board policy a way for community members, parents, board members, staff, and anyone to submit concerns or complaints about books on these lists. The second thing I wanted to point out is that oftentimes, I don't know if it's necessarily the case of summer reading lists, but within classroom assignments at least, we usually have an alternative book option for students if students or parents have concerns, I believe. In one case, even some students had some concerns, I believe, about a book written by Sherman Alexie, and that was accommodated. But the third thing I wanted to point out was, you know, we do receive concerns that our books are, you know, politically charged, or are partisan, or that there is some form of bias in our teaching staff. And I wanted to say a few things about that. First, as a student myself at Scottsdale Unified School District, I was fortunate to have amazing teachers. I do not, I do not recall any of them ever forcing us to read something or believe what we were reading, and trying to brainwash us or marking us down because we wrote a paper- paper that might have had a contrarian view as, as we just actually approved. You know, we, we afford a lot of rights to our students, the right to form and express ideas, the right to publish their views, and, and make those known. So, you know, I always thought that at our schools, or at least at Arcadia High School, we always had a very good free flow of ideas, which I think is very critical to, very critical to education, very critical to the Socratic method, which a lot of our teachers employ, and a lot of educators across the nation at all levels employ, and, and just, and just, you know, a, a very good learning environment generally. And I, I wanted to point out in looking at these lists, you know, we, we did hear questions about two books, Ask Me No Questions, and Crossing the Wire. My point would be to that, you know, there, there are three books on this reading list, for example, by Anne Rand, who is an extremely well-known conservative philosopher. The ideas expressed in her books are extremely pro-capitalist. She is widely admired by individuals like, you know, by conservative commentators like Glenn Beck, Justice, Clarence Thomas, all sorts, all sorts of individuals. And my point is on that, you know, I do not, I would never suggest banning, firstly, the banning of books, or the removal of books on these lists. And I, I don't think any of my colleagues would either, though I, I can't speak for them. But my point is, even those books, which I personally might disagree with the philosophy contained within them, are critical to the learning process, and, you know, to critical thinking, to be able to read something and to challenge it, or to think about it, and play, put yourself in someone else's shoes. All of that is very important to the, to, to the standards that we need to teach to, to the tools available to teachers and others to teach these ideas, and to teach these abilities. So, you know, I want to thank our district for really working on this and pulling it together, and at the same time, I just wanted to address directly the concerns that various individuals had raised. I, I don't think that books are dangerous in and of themselves, I think it's, it's all about the learning process. So, I just want to point out that, you know, there, there are plenty of books that even board members might disagree with and not like, but, you know, should still remain because they do have very serious academic merit, and are, are helpful tools to that end. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Well, I guess, board member Perleberg.
I guess, just for clarity, are, are we now going to go through the supplemental, the material of, I said, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get order-
There's a vote on this, and then we move to the supplemental materials.
Okay, so this is supplemental book list, that's, again, I'm just trying to get oriented in my board book here, I, because I apologize, it is flipped.
Books versus materials.
Yeah, okay, so this is supplemental book list. Okay, so then, I, I guess I will just go ahead and comment then. You know, first off, we are all very appreciative of the work that has gone into, obviously a process that kind of got ragged around the edges, kind of got overlooked a lot over the years. Yeah, our board, I, I know for a fact, has not approved, you know, these materials, or we've never really had these discussions. So I am very grateful that we're coming up with a defined process for these materials, for, for how we talk about it in our district, because I think that's what we have to highlight here the most tonight. We're really defining, well, for first time in a long time, how we're going to, in this district, have conversations around these materials. And, and of course, we all value productive conversations, and conversations that kind of listen to all sides, so I just, I want to highlight that. I do want to highlight as well, from what we've seen from this presentation, or how I process it, is we are really looking at the, looking at the different layers. You have your classroom situation, then you have your instructional leadership on your site, your principal, that has to kind of determine the, the pulse, the temperature of the community there that they serve. They have to listen to concerns and issues, and our district has to have a way to process those concerns, issues into, and I'm glad we're here, we can now understand how we get something removed, or how we get something added. So that's incredibly important, and I think to our community, they need to, you know, really speak to their principal and their leadership on their site about how we have this conversation there at the site first, and where it's going to be most productive, and what will happen to that conversation as it goes into the district leadership, because sometimes that can get a little vague. So, I appreciate clarity here, and as we've heard repeatedly, and thank you for sharing, this is a work in progress, it will always be a work in progress, so appreciate that. I think also it's important to clarify that HR component that is there, and it's not necessarily listed in here in these lists, but we do know there is a process where our instructional leadership, our principals at our sites, and our HR department can have conversations with educators who, for, in whichever way, has crossed a line or raised concerns with the community that they serve, and have a way of having those conversations as well. We, we always know that there's those situations that can come up, but I'd like to add another level here that I did hear tonight in our public comment, that our district here, I think probably in, in administration and the board, maybe needs to have future conversations on a more philosophical level of how we do want to deal in our district with the more divisive political environment we find our community in. And I'm not even quite sure how that will look, but how is a district, that means our job as a board, to, to kind of take our community input and figure out, how are we going to serve the needs of everyone best? I think enough has happened over the last few years that makes the conversation necessary in our board, on how we're going to deal with the environment that we're in, and the, that political divisiveness that our, our families face, our children face, and so, so that may be another level that we'll, we really should consider seriously.
I'd like to attempt to answer that. First of all, I think it should, we should be reminded, this is the second discussion we've had on the book list and the process used, and, and I appreciate teaching and learning, following through on the processes that we talked about in September, and developing that committee and the approval process. Secondly, the book list is really two different lists for each of the middle school grade levels. There is the classroom list used during the year, then there's the summer reading list. And, and the books that were mentioned were on the summer le, reading list, where students have choices, and in fact, my granddaughter will be a sixth grader at Kokopah this fall, and she chose two books other than those two, on her own, with, with parental approval. She didn't find those two topics interesting to her, so, so she chose, she chose How to Steal a Dog. She comes from a great line of, of intellectuals. But I, I think the point is, one thing that we always have in common throughout these processes, there is choice, and there's, there's parental input, and, and if there appears to be no choice from the list itself, we always have opt-out options for individuals, and alternative assignments for whatever the subject matter that may be controversial or contrary to family values. As public school, we have a responsibility to educate every child who comes through our door, and regardless of what they believe in their home, regardless of their background, their economic conditions, every child, and so we have to have a balanced curriculum, and a balanced choice. We want material that is going to challenge kids to think, help them develop perspectives that may be new to them, but be careful not to infringe upon family values. That's a huge task. So I believe in having lists that provide choices, lists that are carefully vetted so that they are all, always rigorous, and in the right place, at the right grade level, and books that will engage the student in learning. And so, some student may find Ask Me No Questions to be mind-provoking, thought-provoking, and relevant, and others find How to Steal a Dog to be something that they're interested in. The task then is that the teacher, after the summer reading, provides a lesson that brings out the same kinds of thought processes. How do you analyze the book? How do you synthesize the things that you learned? Regardless of which book you read, without talking about the actual political bent or bias, if you will, from that book, or, or from the fountainhead, or whatever, and, but rather help the students develop a process of understanding what they read, and how does that fit with their own experiences, and what they know, and what, and what they are taught. It, it's a partnership between the parents, and the schools as well, and the teachers. And so it takes continual review and conversations. I appreciate families who come and bring to our attention something that, that they object to, for very good reason, and, and thankfully, done in a civil manner, I appreciate that very much in this day and age. And our commitment is to work with you on those choices. And a parent who comes in with another that says, I want a book that's more challenging, I want my kids to understand what it is like for a child to cross the wire, well, we have a choice for that, and we have a choice for those who don't want that. The challenge again is for the teachers to bring together and have a teaching opportunity about literature, regardless. And we'll continue to work, it's an ongoing process. We have a committee of people who are well-educated in this field, and practice in this field, who will help us with that. We're not here to defend one book or another book, except to send it through a review if necessary, but we are here to develop a balanced curriculum so that all kids can learn and become responsible adults, and that's what we're striving for.
Thank you. I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Greenberg. The book committee, in the presentation, it's teachers, media specialists, admin, district, and parents, one from each school. Can you explain that, and how are they chosen? And when you say one from each school, like, how would I know what, like, the makeup is of parents on there? Like, you know?
Sure, let me have Ms. Redner speak to that, or do you want to have Paul?
I can start, but Paul did it. I mean, we reached out to families, and teachers, and principals, and invited them, one per each school, meaning we have representation from every school.
Okay. So, so we reached out, but I mean, given an idea, like, if I was looking at how many teachers, one from each school means there's, if some, if I was at Kokopah, and I was a teacher at Kokopah, and I filled a slot, is there any more from Kokopah, or is, explicitly, this was confusing to me?
Well, we're definitely open to more people.
Okay.
However, sometimes it's a little harder to-
I understand this is a process, and I want to thank you, because I know that, that, again, this is evolving, and I appreciate that you have put in a lot of hard work, and we will make changes along the way, but I was a little confused by that, so.
Do you want to address, who's there?
Sure. So, given the fact we had a, an issue to try to solve, we needed to figure out a way to vet books, and a way to look at what we're doing in terms of balance approach, our committee's young and new, so my first step was to reach out to all teachers, saying, hey, would you be willing to volunteer to be a part of this? And teachers came forward, and luckily, we had a representation from almost every school. So at Kokopah in particular, there are two teachers that represent your school on this committee. And with regards to the administrators, because I didn't want to give them more work to do, I offered some suggestive help, and I, I said to several principals and several administrators, would you be willing to join us in this effort, because we need their voices too, because it's important to know, when the parent has a concern, they're probably going to go to the principal first. The next step was to worry about how we're going to get parent involvement, and that was the trickier part. So we had teachers in their back-to-school nights to make a, make a recommendation, make an announcement to their, to their constituents, to their parents, and said, if you want to join this committee, this is what's going on, this is the purpose for it, to look at our new book material, to review book material that needs to be there. And at the March 28th meeting, what I asked the principals to consider is, when we have to expand, we start expanding our committee to be larger than what it is currently, that we make sure that, you know, the principal, who knows their communities, communities the best, that they reach out to their parents on their, on their campuses, and the campuses have reached, and the parents who reach out, reach out to their campuses to, to volunteer to be part of the committee. So basically, it started off small with the relationships that I have in the district, being a curriculum coach, and we expanded it to people that, who volunteered their time in their, and were recommended through their back-to-school nights for the parent part of it.
Would it be unrealistic to maybe when we publish these book lists, like the summer reading book list, maybe put a blurb in there, if you'd like to be part of the committee or the process? And invite people that way?
And then to contact the principal, instructional leader, and the campus if you want to join us.
Because I would like to see more parents involved, you know, and I know, I, I appreciate that we have the opt-out process, because we are making great strides. You know, being a parent myself, I've never had an issue, but I want to be involved and see what my kids are reading. You, you had committed to me that we would look and develop a process for the ancillary materials. That was something that I felt like we're a little bit weak in, and we need to work on, and that's kind of that part where we don't want to take away the creativity for the teacher that sees something that they think is fantastic, that will kind of add to what they're trying to teach in the classroom, but yet, it's kind of to the side. And we talked about previously, maybe the principal being involved, but again, sometimes that takes longer for approval, but I saw on the ancillary materials presentation, for instance, you had like a guest speaker. Certainly, that's not happening, you know, at eight o'clock at night, you know, someone is, is actually scheduling that, so, and I don't expect you to have the process laid out, because we just talked about this, but you had given me a commitment that maybe we would work on that piece, because that is a piece that I think is maybe concerning some parents, that last-minute addition to the classroom materials or something, you know? But I think we can, we can get there, but if you want to speak to it, that'd be great.
Absolutely, and in our second presentation, we will address that a bit, because it is a process we have to develop. So I can address that, and just, when we move on to the next one. But absolutely, I appreciate your feedback, and we actually put some of your ideas in that, in the idea.
Okay.
And if I may, and now that we have a reinvigorated parent council, that's also a great resource, as parent council is getting representation from each school, that then they go back to their PTO meetings and so forth, so that's, that's a great communication vehicle for getting volunteers as well.
And we might need to call it a book club, because that sounds more fun, because we are reading the books.
Well, that's what they, that's what they do call it, is that you get to have a book discussion club, and my teachers have said that they say that this is the best committee they ever set up, because people, teachers like talking about books.
Great. Board member Beckham?
Thank you, and thank you for putting this together, because I support the efforts to put together this process, so that our, our parents and our students can see that we are making an effort, and being intentional in the books that we are choosing, and to, to teach and instruct to our students. As it was mentioned, there's many layers to what you just gave us, so I'm just going to pick one and piggyback what a board member, or president Buckman, had mentioned about the ancillary materials. So, my concern with the ancillary materials, and I'm so glad we're doing that process, is though, but by, that by the definition that you provided us, that it will still be considered a supplemental material according to state statute, because the state statute does not refer to ancillary materials. So, I know you had mentioned that you had, you know, talked with other districts- So, I know you had mentioned that you had, you know, talked with other districts and that you had talked to legal, and legal felt that it would not be included in that definition. I would, since there is that concern and because it is not defined in state statute clearly, that we, that legal opinion is documented, and if we can, since this is evolving and dynamic, if we can come up with a process so that those things can be approved, or as many of them as possible, and of course through the principal, and then brought to the board so that there is no question, just to take a look at that. It may not be the priority right now, but it should be something that I think be looked at. Thank you.
Board Member Perleberg?
Thank you. I do want to add my support to President Beckman and Board Member Beckham on that next step of the ancillary materials, because, you know, I think for everyone, the lines can get a little fuzzy, but what's important is here we're showing tonight that we are trying to be very thoughtful and create that strong dialogue within our community about what is being taught in our classrooms, and that should extend to the ancillary. I recognize, I'm sure we all recognize, the possible problem of a lot of material to review. I think it does have to be at that principal level, that site level, and then the question would be on a, I mean, and we also know ancillary materials are so immediate, you can't have them approved before the teacher uses them, it's an after-the-fact approval. I think most of us understand that, recognize that, that's going to be after the fact, it's going to be at the end of the year or, you know, the next August, but at least it shows there is, there is a conversation happening at site level, there is some oversight, and there is a place where anyone in the community can go and kind of see the types of things that are in our classrooms. So, I'm very supportive of that as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move to, but we are approving the book list, right?
That's correct.
So, the, every, every new book that is being considered is going through this process and this matrix, correct?
Yes, that we can add books and remove books.
Right, and you can remove books, I wanted to point that out. And the previous ones that we've always had in the district can be looked at again as well, right?
Absolutely.
And by parents that are concerned. Okay, I wanted to make that point. All right, I make a motion then to approve Action Item 9E, the approval of the 2019-20 English Language Arch Middle and High School Supplemental Book List. Do I have a second?
Oh, move it.
Board Member Beckham seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the approval of our supplemental materials list. Dr. Gargan. Oh, questions and comments, but she's going to present.
Okay, so this is supplemental materials, so just so I'm clear. This is going to be much shorter, because this is going to be in development. So, we talked about our robust procedure for adopted text, we delineated between the three, adopted text, supplemental material, and ancillary. And now, teaching and learning will undertake a process to look at how to define these materials, and we know they're content-based, we know we have a working list. So what we're providing for you tonight that we're seeking approval on is our tried-and-true, well-known supplemental materials that you can see in numerous campuses, and I gave you some examples, such as Read 180, such as Spalding. These are without question tried-and-true, very well-known, great reputation, one that we get great results from. So we're bringing that list to you tonight to seek your approval, but then we're also making the commitment to you that we will deliver a process for how we consider supplemental materials in the future and how we will consider ancillary materials in the future. And having those discussions brought about some really great ideas that we will work through in a committee, because in teaching and learning, we don't want to make a decision in isolation, we're removed from the classroom, we understand that. So we need to hear the voice of the teacher, we understand that teaching is an art and a science, and as this board talked about, we really need to make sure we have accountability of what's happening in the classroom, particularly with ancillary materials, but we don't want to slow down or stifle that creative, rigorous, innovative teaching that our constituents love. That's what they, they love their teachers, they love their classrooms. So we're going to have to work to find that balance in teaching and learning, and our deliverable will bring a process to you. So just for an example, teaching and learning staff, before I arrived, developed these great rubrics that you saw, that really helps frame in a common way how we look at a book. So if you want to join the book club, you're going to also learn how to use this rubric. So taking that rubric idea and having it as a resource for ancillary materials. So for example, I'm a teacher, and I'm coming up with something innovative, but I have a little bit of heartburn over it, I want to think about it a little bit. I could bring, I could look at this not-yet-created teaching and learning ancillary rubric that, you know, is optional and available, and bring it to my principal, fill it out with that, or bring it to my professional learning community, and have a robust discussion on pros and cons of using this. So that's just going to help move everyone's practice forward, where we want to be very reflective when we teach. So that's just one option that this committee could come up with. So, we, as Board Member Perleberg said, we have to be consistent in our language in regards to what is supplemental, what is adopted, and what is ancillary, and then we need to develop consistent processes for all three. So we're committed to doing that. And I felt like this team made a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time, considering all the stakeholders they involved and the huge numbers of books involved. So, next year will be a much easier lift as we move forward. So the recommendation right now is to seek approval of the current working supplemental list we provided you, that's the tried-and-true list. We're going to establish a process involving stakeholders for both ancillary and supplemental materials, and we will deliver that process to you as soon as this is ready.
Okay, questions?
I have one. Again, and it won't be, hopefully it won't be lengthy, because we've covered a lot of this. Again, that current working supplemental list can be, for lack of a better word, challenged. Someone could come and say, "This is, you know, concerns me." And I appreciate you listening on the other, the ancillary materials with the matrix, because I think even if there is something that a teacher might look at and say, "Well, you know, this isn't fitting," it can kind of maybe take away a little heartburn, and they'll decide not to do it, like you said. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that first question.
Well, and we have that opt-out for all assignments and activities, it's not just for the reading list. So even if something is ancillary or supplemental or on the adopted text, and there's a concern about it, there's always that opt-out option and alternative activity, and I have found when I was a principal to be, you know, if you sit down with the parent and the teacher and you have a discussion, usually you can find an alternative that makes everybody happy.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Action Item 9F, the approval of the 2018-2019 Supplemental Materials List? So moved. Board Member Beckham moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Perleberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, moving on to future items. Do I have any requests for future items? No? Okay. We move now to Item 11, dates of our upcoming meetings. Tuesday, June 25, 2019, 12:00 p.m., a special board meeting, executive session, student appeal hearing. 12:00 p.m.? Excuse me?
12:00 p.m.?
12:00 p.m., that's what it says. Let me double-check. Yep, noon.
I have one, anybody else?
Yep. Okay. 12:00 p.m., Coronado High School. B, Tuesday, June 25, 2019, 3:00 p.m., a regular governing board meeting at Coronado High School. Okay, Action Item 12, any governing board reports?
I don't have, I just have the three o'clock.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 8:22.